What's the call this meeting with kind of a school committee to order Monday, February 22, 2021 at 7:19. Would you all join me for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, so I want to thank everybody before we go forward for being patient and dealing with us on this very unusual night with technology for us. Thank you. I hope everyone's able to get on and we try to get Mr. Neef and Dean and Jen and everybody who got the word out as best they could. Hope everybody was able to get on in the community. I also want to, as I mentioned before, I want to push public comment down until after student council update and before approval of minutes, but like Mr. Neef to give everybody the procedure to participate right now. So everybody has a chance to participate during that time. They can get in the queue if they want to speak.
Okay, if you're interested in participating in public comment, you just need to put your name into the chat. The chat should be open. And you can start doing that now through as we go through the agenda items. We're going to have a recognition. We have comments from the APC. Actually, we don't have a student council update tonight. Let us know that they did not have an update for us this evening. But that should give you plenty of time to put information into the chat if you are interested in making comment at the time of public comment. And then just as a reminder, this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And then we're using the Zoom webinar format for the meeting. And then I just want to apologize for whatever mistake happened in terms of the Zoom link. I'm not exactly sure what occurred, but we found that we had a dead link as we went to go into the meeting today. So that caused a little bit of panic. We, I think we were able to get the link out to the public. And then I also apologize because I was exhibiting some of my frustration as people were first logging out to the meeting that we were in this situation. I don't think I said anything that patently offensive, but I was exhibiting my frustration. So I apologize to the community for that. So obviously, you know.
Honestly, Scott, if that's exhibiting frustration, then you're the most mild mannered person I know because you didn't even swear and I probably would have. So.
So we have, you know, we have over 200 people attending this meeting because this is a, this is a very important meeting for the Carver Public Schools this evening. And not that I want any meeting to have a glitch or, or an issue, but certainly this is not the meeting I wanted to have a glitch or an issue with in terms of the Zoom link technology. So we apologize and we'll go, we'll go forward from there.
No problem. Everybody's human, Scott. Don't worry about it. Everyone understands, I think. Um, okay. So we'll go for a recognition first for middle school drama club.
Yes, we're excited to have Tammy Johnson, the director of the middle school drama club and some of the members, Lillian Waif and Emma Robbins and Evan Sullivan. They're going to share a little bit about their presentation they have come up this weekend. You know, the, the. I just want to commend really a lot of our clubs and activities that have been going forward in the COVID environment, in the pandemic environment, and still providing some of these opportunities for students. So tonight we want to highlight the middle school drama club a little bit and give them the opportunity to promote themselves for this show this weekend. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tammy and to Evan, to Lillian and to Emma. And Evan, Lillian, and I think I should be able to turn on your videos. If you can't, I'll go double check.
Yeah, they're pros at this, Scott. We've been practicing. So, um, so thank you very much for this opportunity. We've been working since the beginning of the year on, we, we started, you know, figuring out what we could do, not knowing what this, at this time of year would bring. And as far as how we could present, we've had incredible support from Scott, Mike Schultz, the principal. Julian Griffin actually has helped us a lot in trying to figure out how to work some of the Zoom and also with our presentation. And also that we're part of the Massachusetts Education Theater Guild and they've been actually incredible support also. So this year we've done, first of all perseverance. This is not easy being on screen. Being on stage is tough, but being on screen is definitely hard. We definitely have learned new skills. As you know, Scott has shown, this is, this Zoom webinar is not easy and working as a team. So our, our play is basically being a middle schooler in 2020. It'll be on Friday at 6:00 PM, February 26th and Sunday at 1:00 PM, February 28th. And I'd like Evan, I'm actually going to have Emma go first, Evan, then Lillian. They're going to all share a little bit of their experiences. Go ahead, Emma.
Yeah, so, um, the play is called Being a Middle Schooler in the Year 2020. And it basically takes you through the year 2020 because it's a very challenging year and it takes you through like month by month. And we each wrote our own monologues describing what was going on during that month and our personal experiences. What was going on during that month during this year?
Thanks, Emma. Evan?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I just got to say, I'm really glad on how this turned out so far. So our show, Being a Middle Schooler in 2020, we worked pretty hard on it and I'm really excited to see the final result and I hope everybody else is. Since we wrote our monologues this year, we wrote scripts instead of using other ones, we wrote our own, which is a lot different for us. But I think it's really good because it's showing how we feel about the events in 2020 and we can really express what we thought. And although we've had a bunch of difficulty with technology and everybody lagging sometimes and doing all our rehearsals on Zoom, our actors have done a fantastic job in this show. And I am so excited for everybody to see it on Friday and Sunday.
Thanks, Evan. Lillian?
Um, the play Being a Middle Schooler in 2020 is written and created by the Middle School Drama Club. Each of us were assigned a month and we worked together to write monologues about each month. After we were done, Mr. Johnson critiqued them and he said, "How to make them better." We were jumping, writing, giving each other ideas for costumes and backers. Together, we made all the details of the play together.
Thanks, Lillian.
So yeah, sorry, Lillian and Emma, but you guys both froze on us a little bit. You're a little staggered. I don't know if you want to try to give them the opportunity again, Tammy?
Um, yeah, I'm wondering if they shut off their screen. It might be a little.
Emma, Emma, Lily, why don't you, Lily, why don't you shut your screens off and try to, because both of you just cut out a little bit. Evan, you are, Evan, you are nice and strong, but Lillian and Emma cut out on us a little bit. So maybe we'll give them that opportunity again, Tammy, and see if we can get a little.
Definitely. Thanks.
So you want to try again?
Yeah, Emma, go ahead.
Okay, so our. Okay, our play is called Being a Middle Schooler in the Year 2020. And it basically, the play basically takes you through the year 2020 and like all the challenges. And it takes you through it like month by month. So each of us, we wrote our own monologue to describe what was going on during that month. And it was, it was from our point of view. So I think it was cool because we got to describe what was going on from our point of view during that month. And 2020 was a very hard year. So I think that was cool for us to be able to show that. And like Evan said, I think it was cool because we got to write our own script, which is different because usually we are presenting off of previously written scripts. So I think it was cool because we got to write our own scripts and contribute to that.
Very good.
Thanks, Emma. Lillian?
The play Being a Middle Schooler in 2020 was written and created by the Middle School Drama Club. Each of us were assigned a month and we worked together to write monologues about each month. After we wrote the monologue, Mr. Johnson critiqued them and gave us ideas on how to make them better. With writing, we gave each other ideas for costumes and backers. Together, we finished all of the details and put the play together.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lillian. Thank you, Emma. Thank you, Evan. Tammy, maybe I missed it, but where is it? How can someone watch this? Is this going to be on Area 58 on, there's going to be a link?
On Zoom. Yeah, there's a link, Zoom webinars. Actually, that's one of the things we, the tech department also supported us in, in figuring out what you guys are doing right now on the Zoom link. So we've been basically practicing and rehearsing using the webinar. So I believe we're post, it's posted on the, I know Gina has it and is posting it on the website and I also sending out emails. So through emails and sent it out to the staff to share with students. And so I'm trying to get from various, I tried to do Facebook, but I am horrible on Facebook. Um, I couldn't get the link on to go on. So if anyone wants to help me out with that one, that would be great. But I'm, I kind of stumbled on that. But thanks.
Tammy, I'm happy to share it on Facebook and on, I'm on all of the class pages except for sixth grade and 10th grade. If anybody knows people, I, I requested to join those class pages, but nobody's approved with me.
Okay, yeah, I'll send.
But I'm on every other class page. So if you can get, if, if I get that link, I am happy to share it on all of those class pages plus the two Carver pages.
Right. And then both, and Ruby's also sharing it on the Coyote Chronicle, I think, or something. And so I'll definitely email you, Jen.
Jen is that recording secretary. She's good at that, getting the word out. That's great. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you, kids. And I, good luck with everything. And I'm glad to hear all the enthusiasm, as I'm sure everyone else is. Anybody else want to have a, have a comment or a question for the, for the kids or Tammy?
I'll just say thank you for presenting to us tonight and I'm looking forward to watching this weekend.
All right, thanks, everybody. Evan, Lillian, Emma, nice job. Thank you for doing it again. And Lillian, Emma, having to repeat yourselves, but I turned the video off for it. Well, if you heard you well, it's like, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. All right. So we're going to move on to comments from the EA PC.
That's me. Right. Thank you. Changing, changing my, I'm super proud of them, by the way. That was, that was, they did a really nice job. So I now I'm changing my hat here. Making sense of the world has been incredibly challenging. We realize there's tremendous pressure from the community to bring back our students full in person. We also understand the difficult situations our families are in because many of us are also in the same situation too. We hear the same stories and have the same stories. We are also very concerned for the mental health and wellbeing of our students. We know the impact of this past year will be felt for many, many years. As educators, we will see firsthand the effects in our classrooms. However, we would be remiss if we did not express our concerns about bringing the students back too soon. Every educator wants all our children in the classroom. We want all our children back in a safe classroom. Safe for our children, safe for our families, safe for our teachers and ESPs, and safe for all building personnel. And of course, that would extend to our bus drivers as well. At this time, so few people have been vaccinated in Massachusetts. We wish educators had been prioritized like they were in other states. The sooner we all become vaccinated, the more lives we can save. Many educators in our school district are concerned about the changing, changing the protocols and guidelines that have worked in our schools. Only once have we had to go full remote, full remote due to the increased number of students and staff having to quarantine or isolate. This did not happen by accident. It was the hard work and planning of our administration and staff. Obviously, mask wearing and using hand sanitizer are important. However, we strongly believe that it was our ability to practice social distancing that had a significant impact. This only occurred because only half our student population attended the building at a time. Adding more people to the mix will have consequences. The increase could cause a spike or increase in positive cases, creating a situation where we do not have enough staff or a district will need to go full remote. We realize this decision is extremely challenging and that the answers to our problem do not satisfy every situation. Yet, we hope you do consider the number one goal we established the summer. From our back to school planning principles, number one, health, safety and wellbeing of our school community is the top priority. We appreciate your commitment and dedication for our school district and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, so we don't have any student council update right this, for tonight. So, right, all right. So we'll move right into comments from the general public.
So, so right now we have three people who said they'd like to comment. And again, if you're interested in doing something during public comment during this time, if you just put your name in the chat, that would be great. I'll take them in the order that people put their name into the chat. So first will be Jody Slade. I think, just give me a second. I do need to bring people in as panelists. So I will do that. And. But Jody, you should be able to turn on your camera and speak.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
We can.
Okay, good. Thanks for giving me the chance to speak to all of you along with 180 somewhat people tonight. Um, I do appreciate that what Tammy said as far as keeping everyone safe. However, I think what we're forgetting is what the impact is having by not having our children in school. What that is impacting our kids. So I have a fourth grader. I also have a first grader. This morning, as a matter of fact, my first grader cried for about 35 to 40 minutes because she didn't want to get on Zoom. And that's because she said it's boring and that she didn't find it interesting at all. And that's from a first grader. What I'm finding from my fourth grader has been a lot of anxiety in regards to not being able to go to school, not being able to socialize with his friends and a lot of things that come with not just the educational aspects of being in school. And while I get that some parents are not comfortable sending their children, they have the choice to keep them home. Whereas our choice to send the kids in school has been taken from us for over a year. In the beginning, I do realize that we didn't know a lot about the virus. We didn't know what was going to happen, how it could affect everyone. And still it is a very serious virus for a lot of people. However, we still have other states that, for instance, my sister has three elementary school kids in school five days a week in Florida. So I don't understand how states like that, along with other communities surrounding us, for instance, Pembroke, Kingston, Marshfield, are all going back to full in person. So aside from, one of the comments at the last committee meeting kind of rubbed me the wrong way in the fact that, you know, we were going to say that, you know, we need to have a downward trend in the cases, which has been, it has been happening. But then we have to worry about school, February vacation and the upticks from February vacation. But then we start, you know, spring sports and then another vacation. So I feel like with that kind of comment, it's almost as if spring sports are put above children's education, which in my view is not the case. Along with the fact that every time we have a break, we're going to have an uptick, in which case, when do our children get to come back? Because essentially this virus is not going away. It's not going away anytime in the near future. And yet our kids are suffering not being able to be in school and learning with their classmates. So I really, really urge you guys to try and figure out a way to make this happen for our students or the people who are comfortable sending their children back to end school, that we can make this happen. Because frankly, in my opinion, my children need to be in school. They, um, education is essential. I don't know what else to say other than we need to get the kids back in school. And I hope that will put education above sports, in my opinion.
Thank you very much, Jody. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Shannon Alzheimer, from order to a panelist and remove, say, Jody, I'll put you back to a attendee. Shannon, you should be able to turn your camera on and speak.
Um, so I agree with Lily, what Jody had just said, but in addition, you know, I have a first grader and it's boring. It's hard for him to concentrate. A lot of the kids are, it, it's just not something that they sit there and they can't stare at a computer. Their attention span just doesn't work that way for this type of learning. And it's also concerning where our kids are, I, I have an older child and I know where she was in first grade and I'm seeing where my son is now and what they're learning and they're going through, you know, letter sounds still and writing letters and they should be reading more than they are. And so I'm concerned about the ripple effect that that's going to have moving forward and how that might be addressed. You know, even in this next coming year, is it going to, is second grade going to really be first grade B? And, and that aspect, I'm concerned about, again, him being bored or disinterested. In terms of the virus, as Jody said, it's not going away. And other towns are starting in full person. And if we just continue with the lower grades and two weeks and see, and two weeks and see, I'm concerned that my daughter in the middle school won't even make it back into school, let alone high schoolers. So my other suggestion would be, or question would be, why if there are two separate buildings, would we not start both of the lower grades out with full time at the same time and see where it goes from there? I do understand that you guys are in a horrible spot to be in. And so I appreciate all that you have done and will continue to do. But the mental health of all of our kids is really scary at this point. And so being back in school is really something that I hope we can achieve sooner rather than later.
Thank you very much, Shannon. We appreciate your comments to the committee.
Next is Rob Harrington. Just give me a second, Rob. All right, Rob, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn your camera.
Thank you, Scott. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Awesome, awesome. So a lot of how I feel and my wife and I feel echoes a lot of what the last two people have said. I think we can be very understanding that people are afraid of this virus and I think a lot of people should be. And I think in the beginning of things, we all were very afraid of this virus, but I got to be honest. I've been an essential employee the entire time and I haven't missed a single day of work this whole time. And that was scary, especially concerned about bringing something home to my children. My kids are my number one priority above anything else in the world. And my outlook on this has changed drastically since a year ago when this all started. Initially, my number one concern was, I felt and I was concerned that I might bring this home to my family and someone might get sick and that could be the end of that person. However, I have to be honest, at this point, my number one concern is, is I feel that the current system we're doing for education is 100% failing my youngest child and greatly failing my older children as well. I have kids as old as high school and a child as young as first grade. The best example is the first grader. He doesn't get anything at all out of the remote portion of learning, not anything. He cries, he screams, he complains, he refuses to sit at the computer. Even just this meeting tonight, we're all grown adults. We all do this every day. This has become some sort of new normal for us to do things with remote meetings. And we've had technical difficulties that are hard to overcome just this evening. And I, and I don't mean to rub that in because it happens to me at work every day. But we're all grown adults that are used to dealing with things like that and overcoming minor challenges like that. We're talking about a first grader. It takes you 20 minutes to get him ready to sit in front of the computer. You're lucky if he's listening to begin with. And then as soon as you get him sat down to do it, there's a technical difficulty that makes everything held up for 30 seconds. And there goes the whole thing all over again and there's a whole day lost. They find it boring. They complain about it. It just, for a million reasons, it is not working for my child. And I hear the same similar thing from many, many other parents and friends of mine in the community. I don't mean to be critical, but I am an essential employee. I've not missed a single day. I understand you guys have been working super hard and I commend you for that. But it's time to open the door. It's time to let the kids go back. We need a plan that will allow them to go back and stay back because realistically, this is not as scary as we initially thought. It is absolutely a valid threat, but it's not what we once thought it was. Numbers are going down, vaccines are rolling out. It's something that we as humans have overcome much greater things than this vaccine and this virus and everything we're dealing with right now. And I think in the very near future, if not now, anything we use to postpone educating our children any, any longer is simply just uses. I can be understanding until this point, but they need to go back because we currently are 100% failing these children. And it's enough. It needs to be fixed and I expect it to be fixed. And I'm sorry if that's harsh, but that's how I feel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob. No apologies necessary. Everyone's here to give their point of view. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Carrie is next. Give me a second. Carrie, you should be able to turn your camera on and your, unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Um, my opinions are pretty relevant and close to the others that have spoken. I have a child in kindergarten, child in second grade, sixth, ninth and 10th. My kids on IEPs are getting nothing from the school system right now. They're in-person learning two days a week, if that, with holidays, vacations, snow days, you name it. They're more, they're home more than they're in school. I can educate my kindergartner because I'm qualified. I shouldn't have to do that. I'm bringing them to work with me, educating them there. My kids on IEPs, they go to school two days a week and a partial day on another day. That's their only education. They're not on school on their off days for Zoom. We had to stop it. The meltdowns, the stress it was causing for our family is just not worth it. That on top of the fact that they were getting nothing out of those Zoom meetings at all, nothing. My second grader can't sit through it. He throws tantrums. He's now seeing, I don't know, five different doctors all because of his life being disrupted because of COVID, because the school's too scared to have our kids back. I'm an educator. I work with many, many, many children. None of them have had COVID. They don't social distance. They don't wear masks. I get it that it's real, but it is not more important than our kids' education. Something has to change and these kids need to go back to school. The kids in the high school, I'm very concerned with as well. These are kids that are, high school years, they matter when you get to college. You need credits to graduate. There are so many life skills they need to learn that come from school, social skills as well as academic skills. When are those kids going to go back? We're going to start phasing in kindergarten, maybe the end of March, second, third. When do we get to high school? When do we get to high school? These kids that are going out into the world, the seniors that are going to be graduating that have a subpar education at best this year. It's just not acceptable to me. My own child, who's in ninth grade, advocated for herself. She went directly to the school. She went directly to the principals. And she told them, I need to be in school. I can't learn at home. I can't focus at home. This is really hard. I feel like I don't understand. And they just told her, too bad. You have, you have to make the best of it. I don't feel like that's right. I don't feel like our kids' education should be taken from them like that. And then to put out a survey, have you filled the entire survey? At the end of the survey, we're gonna write, just throw it in as a curve ball. Now we want to put kindergarten back half days, but four half days. That's no more than what they're currently getting. And what difference does that make? What do we have now a half an hour to sanitize an entire classroom? Or six of them so that the next batches of students can arrive for the second half of the day? It does not reduce exposure to the teacher, doesn't reduce exposure to the children. And it takes away from their education and learning time. My kids, like I said, they haven't done remote learning, I have to say, in several months. I don't push it. I'm not gonna push it anymore. Their mental health suffered. I won't let it suffer anymore. But something's gonna change. Something's gotta change, or a lot of parents are gonna step up. So I hope that that's discussed tonight, and I hope you can take into account the mental health and educational needs of the kids that need to go back to school.
Thank you very much, Carrie, for your comments and your concerns. We appreciate them.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next is Kyle. Kyle, I do not see you on the attendee list. I don't know if you put in the chat if there's a different name. It's not, oh, I found it, sorry. Hi, Kyle, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn your video on. So Kyle, you're still muted. If you can unmute yourself, that'd be great. I might be able to unmute you as well.
Can you hear you?
Well, Kyle, now it says you're unmuted, but we still can't hear you. So I don't know if there's a issue on your end. Because from our perspective, it's saying you're unmuted.
Use a mute button on his microphone. Kyle, do you wanna work on that? We'll go to someone else until you get it straightened out. Oh, so he's working on it, he says. All right, so why don't we go to the next, the next one, Scott, this person, and we'll come back to Kyle.
I think this would be the last person would be Tara Stone. Kyle, I'll keep you up here on the panelist list. Hi, Tara, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn your video on.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I have a little speech here prepared, and I just wanna say that I'm speaking on behalf of myself and several other parents that have nominated me, so to speak, to speak on their behalf for the other side that you are not hearing tonight. To hear many vocalize wanting to return the students back to school full time is concerning. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, and both are thriving and doing well. The smaller class size and more meaningful discussions have them both participating and learning at a high level that I never could have imagined possible. To change models and upset this course of learning will be devastating to my children as well as many others. It's a weekly battle of reassurances, and the only saving grace is the small class size and the six feet or more of social distance. The administrators, the teachers, all the staff at the school has done a tremendous job at getting this hybrid model to work and to work well. COVID-19 is still very much a threat in our community and in our schools. The ability to keep, to keep six feet of distance has limited the number of close contacts in additional COVID cases that would have otherwise forced the school to return to full remote. We saw the high percentage of students and staff impacted over the holidays when we had to switch for a week. If the school chooses to return full in person, there is no way six feet of distancing will be able to be maintained, putting all the students and staff at higher risk. We all want normal times, but these are not normal times. Sending kids back to crowded classrooms, hallways, buses, and lunches is not helping them get back to normal. They still cannot hang out with their friends, participate in after-school activities, or attend school normally. Teachers cannot get close to a group of students conducting labs and help them hands-on. Students, teachers, and staff will be placed at higher risk, and families will be forced to make tough choices. Did you know that this year's induction ceremony that for students that have been accepted into the National Honor Society has been pared back and is being held virtually? This is an academic achievement that is not easy to retain and should be celebrated at the highest level. Students are able to play sports and celebrate athletic achievements in person, yet academic achievements have to be held virtually. The school committee continues to meet virtually and not even in the same room. What does that tell us about the threat to the schools and the community? How can we consider returning full in person when a small academic achievement cannot safely be held? I've seen pictures of sending our sports teams to other schools and having them all celebrate together. How can we send our children back full time when the numbers are still high and we are a high-risk town? The hybrid model is working and it's working well. I encourage you to stay the course and keep the hybrid model in place. I do feel for the parents that have many children who are struggling. I understand that maybe for every child that is doing well, there may be four or five that are not doing well. But there are students that were students that continue to be students, and there is something to be said for that. Thank you.
Andy, you're muted.
Sorry about that.
Can I, can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
Can the people in the chat, please stop with the office quotes and all the extra stuff? Please stop. We're trying to take care of business here, and you're being distracting. So please stop. Act like professionals. We're trying to get work done here. We're, there's, there's a lot going on, and it's not helpful. So just stop. Thank you.
All right, well, the time, I think we're almost done with comments anyway. Thank you, Tara. I appreciate your comments. And just a, just a little clarification for the public. We've mentioned this several times, and I've mentioned it personally several times. The reason the school committee is, meets remotely is because we tried meeting in person, and we had so much interest from people that still wanted to be on Zoom, but we had technical difficulties with the sound. So people on Zoom could not hear what we were saying, and then people stopped coming in person. So we just decided it was only us at the meetings, so we decided to have everything remote. So that's the reason we we meet remotely. Scott, do we have anybody else? I was Kyle.
I try, Kyle, it's like Kyle has left the meeting, actually. So Kyle is no longer here.
Okay, sorry about that, Kyle. You can email us if you want at a later time if you have anything else. Is that all for, is there anybody else?
Uh, Rob Harrington is asking to speak again. Generally, I would defer
Usually don't, but okay, I'll make an exception for tonight, and that'll be it, for anybody else.
Okay, I
I object. I think this is because then we're gonna let everyone start doing this, and I, I think that it's, it's gonna turn into more of a conversation.
I, I was thinking that. He's trying to respond to a comment that was made, and that's not appropriate for public comment, Andy.
Okay, I didn't know what he was commenting on.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Rob, you're right.
He did mention the chat that he wanted to respond to.
No, no disrespect. Yeah, no disrespect, but it's, it's just, it'll, it's gonna lead to just multiple.
Okay, all right. That's fine. Okay, you're right. Usually we don't do second comments anyway. Okay, so
Kyle, Kyle said he just came back, so he thinks he's gonna be able to make his comments. I think we should give Kyle that opportunity.
Why don't we end with Kyle, then?
I'll try it again. Hi, Kyle.
Hello.
There you are.
There you go. You're good.
All right, is it working now?
You're good. You're on.
All right, sorry about that. Um, yeah. My, my only concern really is, um, you know, it's been tough on everybody going, you know, we moved here two years ago from Whitman, and from going from Whitman Schools to Kava Schools was completely night and day difference. Kava Schools were above and beyond Whitman. You know, the help that my son got was there. You know, his, his learning was there. Whitman didn't, you know, not, not to throw stones, but they didn't really do much for him. So when we moved to Kava, everything that he was doing is just been amazing so far. But with the whole online learning, it's definitely taken a toll on everybody, you know, including the teachers, the children, the staff, and the parents. And as a parent, sadly, I gotta, I gotta bring my son to work with me, and luckily, I work at a mechanic shop, and we have a nice break room that my son can go and, you know, we can, I can set him down, get it Zoom ready. And even we've had problems with Zoom, and even just tonight, I just, I, you know, for some strange reason, I couldn't reconnect on my phone, so I had to get another, you know, system, get ready to go. But I can't monitor him doing his schoolwork. You know, I can only do so much. I will say he's doing, me being able to sit down and actually really do everything with him is beneficial to him. But there's also a hindrance on what he's learning. And it's nothing against any of you guys' fault or anything like that. It's just the, the environment. I have him in the break room at my work, and like I said, I'm thankful that my boss allows me to do that because from the insurance purposes, we shouldn't even be having him there. And, you know, it's at least somewhat good that he gets the socialness of having the other techs up in the break room during lunchtime and, you know, the chit chat. And, you know, he really enjoys that part of it. But trying to get him to sit down and, okay, this is what you need to do. You know, the pamphlets are nice, and we try to work through them, and sometimes they don't get done, sometimes they do. I try my best to try to get them, you know, try to break it up for him so he can get what he needs to get done, you know, without overburdening him. And um, the main thing is, it's, it's, without that, if I didn't have a shop that was as lenient as it is now, you know, I would be taking off multiple days of work to sit at home and make sure that he's sitting down and doing his things. And luckily, like I said, I have a shop that allows me to, you know, to go back and forth between them, make sure that I can see him in the break room and all that stuff, but it's not, it's not an environment for him. And, you know, he's mostly by himself for two, three hours, you know, with an, with an occasional checkup every 45, half an hour, just to see how he's doing, if he needs anything. You know, and it's just not an environment for a child. He should be at school with his friends. He should be at school with, you know, his teachers. You know, obviously precautions, whatever the school allows or needs. You know, I'm pretty sure you have the community behind you to do what you need, guys, what you guys need to do. But it's just, it's, it's, there's a lot of stuff that goes into motion. And there's a lot of stuff that the parents are trying to do to get the child to do their work. And the school's obviously doing the best that they can to provide for the children, which, like I said, no, no one is ever gonna complain about what you guys have been doing. Like I said, we came from another town. Kava is so much better than some of the other towns that are there. I'm all for having the kids go back to school. The biggest thing I've, you know, I kinda always made a joke with people was it, you know, it took a pandemic to make sure that the school was clean. You know, obviously, I always think that, you know, the school should have like a normal cleaning because, you know, obviously the flu, the cold, the, you know, you know, all the, the germs that go with it. And, you know, if they go back full time, awesome. If they go back Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and they let Wednesday for a cleaning day, that's acceptable. You know, that's even fine. The remote learning, like I said, it's, it's a hindrance on the kids. It's a hindrance on the parents. Because I can't always monitor it. I can try my best. I've been doing my best. Luckily, my son has been, you know, been very mellow about it and just trying to do what he can. There's been days where we've missed Zoom meetings because it hasn't connected right, which then at that point, he's staring at the wall in the break room for six, seven hours. Because it, it, it's, it's hot. You know, it's hot on everybody. And I'm fully in support of whatever you guys think, and I just wanted to say my two cents on that.
Thank you very much, Kyle. Thank you for the kind words and welcome to Kava and everyone in the committee. Appreciate your comments. Scott, I noticed a few other people came in just quickly that weren't in before Kyle. They came in after Kyle. There's four people. I'd like to recognize them quickly because they haven't spoke. I don't think they've spoken before.
The next person up is Roberta Dorado.
And I think we'll, after the last one will be Lindsay Silver, and then we'll close out comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes. You should be able to unmute yourself, turn your video on.
There we go. Perfect. Thank you. I'm Roberta Dorado. I have two students, a second grader and a ninth grader. And I will agree, this is extremely hard for everybody. But I think the most important is the health of the teachers of the community. And I think that's priority over education right now. But I will say, the school department has not failed either one of my children. I have my second grader on a 504, and they stay in touch with me. Yes, we've had issues with links not working. I am a full-time working mother. Their father is full-time working, so I understand the stress that it causes on the entire family. But again, most important is the health. The health of my kids, the health of me, my husband, our grandparents. And I think we need to keep that in mind, that it's not just the kids' health. And even though they're not getting the sickness, it's, they're bringing it home to their families. They're bringing it home to extended family members. And if you go back full time, then I think we will have a lot more times that we have to quarantine. And I think because we've experienced it, that that's harder than staying on the hybrid model. We're out of school for the couple of weeks right before school vacation, so they just went back to school today and hadn't been in school since the beginning of February. So that's harder than figuring out three days a week. And I think that is more important than getting the kids back into school, out of the houses. And I, and maybe the parents that are having a hard time, they need more communication with teachers because I find anytime I've had an issue, I immediately go to the remote teacher or her in-person teacher, and they are on top of things quicker than I could have asked. So I really have to say thank you to the school department for everything that they have done for the kids.
Thank you very much, Roberta. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Roberta, I appreciate your comments.
Rose Fellini.
Okay, Ms. Fellini.
My camera's off just because I'm holding my foster baby and he can't be on the meeting, is that okay?
Yeah, I'll say, ready to go.
I can't hear you, Scott.
Yeah, you're good.
It went silent.
Can you hear me?
Very lightly, I don't know what just happened, it's been fine the whole.
Well, we can hear you loud and clear, at least I can, so you can, you can go ahead.
You can hear me, okay.
Yep.
I just, um, I just wanted to kind of go off what Roberta just said. I just feel like teachers in the school are getting a bad rap, that kids are thriving. For example, my first grader who's on an IP couldn't, didn't know his letters or sounds in August due to his disability, and he's a full reader now due to the Carver staff. Um, his special ed services have been amazing, it's not better in this model. Um, he's getting all his services and then some. By all the staff, the communication has been amazing, if I had sent an email like this morning after vacations, he has a hard time returning to school. Within twenty minutes of sending that email, all four staff members returned and sent me a picture of them happy as could be and so forth. He's also been in close contact three times. And if we were in the full, um, full model, the whole class would have had to quarantine. In one case, when we had COVID, his class did have to quarantine. And while quarantined, they went above and beyond to make sure he was serviced and received all of his services. And I just feel like kids are thriving, is it ideal? No, but if we do go back to the full return, I think we're gonna have so many more students quarantining. And when half the class is quarantining, they're not gonna have any live services via Zoom or in person. And then I think we are gonna be failing our kids more. I just feel like it, a little more time needs to pass to show that the numbers are still declining before we move to that next step. It is ideal, I worked at Central Public Schools as a special ed administrator, and it's important for these kids to be in school. But we have to do it at the right time, or I think it's gonna have more negative effects going back and forth from full to hybrid. And kids just can't deal with that transition, it's a lot in these kiddos. So I just think in due time, yes, a full return is very important, but the time is not quite yet. And that kids are thriving at home doing the hybrid model, and the staff has gone above and beyond to make sure that happens. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much, Rose, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, uh, who's next?
You should be able to, uh, turn on your mic, I'm usually just.
Yes. Hi, can you see me? Oh, no.
We can hear you.
Okay, here we are. Um, I don't know, I have some weird background behind. In any case, I have something prepared, um, I'm a first-time speaker, um, at a school committee meeting, but I feel very strongly, I'm also, um, an educator in another town. So, um, I, I do have experience teaching remotely, um, as, as well as, uh, in person. So, um, my name is Janet DiDucci and I'm a resident of Carver. I have three children that are at the Carver High School, Middle School. I'm a parent who's concerned about Carver's possible consideration to return to fully in-person schooling. I am writing to ask you, I'm reading something, sorry, to prioritize remote hybrid learning rather than reopening school buildings fully in the coming weeks. Reopening schools during a global pandemic is a complex task. Many of our buildings have no air conditioning or proper filtration to filter the COVID nineteen virus. Bathrooms often run out of soap and hot water, hallways and classrooms are often crowded. Many students follow to struggle rules, especially with that amount of people in a building, let alone practicing social distancing or wearing masks. In the best of times, schools are P two dishes of illness. How could we send our children back into a classroom that may be breeding grounds for the virus? How could we risk the lives of children and school staff who are, are at increased risk? A safe reopening is unlikely through winter, given our current patterns of local behavior. Until people in our town of Carver wear masks and pa- practice social distancing, stop gathering indoors with over ten people who are not living together, community spread will continue unabated. Schools cannot solve problems created by others. The coronavirus pandemic represents an opportunity for other social institutions to take up their responsibilities, rather than asking teachers and schools to subsidize their failures. Our region has chosen to fail and schools cannot rescue the region from this failure. If Carver plans to reopen in buildings, are you prepared to show you could meet the CDC safety regulation requirements for safe openings before any students and staff enter the school buildings? Can you ensure the following? All seating is spaced at least six feet apart, the desks remain facing the same direction. On school buses, there's only one student per row, skipping rows when possible. For communal spaces, students are staggered, infrequently touched surfaces and shared objects are clean and disinfected between each user. All classrooms have operable windows and effective ventilation systems to increase circulation of outdoor air throughout the school day. Each school has resources to provide each and every student paper, pencils, manipulative scissors, art materials, tablets, computers, or any other su- supplies to eliminate sharing. The staff to clean and disinfect these supplies in between youths, is there time for that? Students and staff groupings are as sta- as static as possible so that same groups of children stay with the same staff all day, for young children as much as possible for older children. Arrival and drop-off times are staggered, uh, using various entrance and exit, that has been going well, I believe, so far with the hybrid. Uh, to limit, uh, you know, different groups and the dismissal, I also agree, has gone wonderful during the hybrid. Um, implementing these and other guidelines will require a massive amount of coordination and influx of funding. The question is not should Carver reopen school buildings, but how can it be done safely? With precious lives at stake, district leaders must be able to ensure the safety of each and every person who walks into a school. Teachers and staff should not be asked to risk their lives while schools struggle to implement new safety protocols while trying to teach. Children should not be treated like guinea pigs while educators figure out how to keep them and their family safe. Before any classroom opens, I ask that Carver Public Schools allow parents and community members to review detailed reopening plans and offer parents and the community to go in person and participate in a dry run of opening. Educators provide an essential service, but in many cases, that service can be provided virtually during this dangerous time. While it is clear that there are students who need in-person related services, these could be some of the students who may be at high risk of contracting COVID nineteen, because it's mandatory for them to wear a mask. Opening buildings to all students will put those students most in need in danger. While therapies are far more effective, when a minister in person figure out how to deliver related services and specially-designed instructions to students remotely would be prudent. Please allow teachers and related service providers, providers to spend the summer, analyze, this coming summer analyzing what worked and what didn't work, which I, you know, hopefully had, it was a quick thing last spring and uh, we really weren't ready for it. And hybrid learning is one hundred percent better this year. If you can't even compare it to last spring, there's just absolutely no comparison. And I think everyone here would agree with that, it has come miles. While I understand it's important to offer a solution to the community that allows caregivers to go back to work, it is my hope that all members of the community, from the students to the adults with underlying health conditions are considered when putting forth a plan for the fully reopening of schools for the remainder of the school year. It is ethically and morally wrong to bring students back without a clear and proven mechanisms to keep children, teachers and non-teaching staff safe. Even one life is too many. Um, and it could even just be a long-term effect. I myself have experienced a person in my family who had COVID. So I know what it's like, I'm not speaking from a, a, a person who doesn't know. Um, and it, it is, it can be what, something to one person and completely different to another, it does not discriminate. While social distancing, masks and cleaning can help mitigate COVID nineteen, remote learning is the only way to ensure our virus doesn't spread in the schools and out of the larger community. Thank you, into the larger community, thanks, that's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you very much, Janet. You did a good job with your first, first time addressing the. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Comments. Uh, okay, we have, uh, one more, Scott, um, Ms. Silver.
Yep, and Lindsay, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn yours, your, uh.
Hi, I am just gonna keep my camera off, cause I am still at work, so I just don't wanna have anything, I'm, since I work at the hospital, no patient information nearby, is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanna keep it brief, cause I'm sure everyone just kind of really wants to hear what your transitioning plan is from the committee. Um, as a healthcare worker and been around COVID since March and since it started, I understand everyone's fear, everyone's concerns, we all know that it's out there and it's real. We all know that not all kids are thriving, not all parents are stay-at-home parents. There has to be something that we can do as a community to get these kids back in school. For those parents and caregivers who do not want to send their children, if, if you're allowing it to go hybrid for some, in full return for others, that should be the option. Not everything works for everyone, not everyone's gonna like your decision. But for the parents, for the children, and for the community who is struggling, something has to happen. I'm not sure what the solution is, but we all know the kids have to be back. Private schools have been going to school every single day, full classrooms, full staff, and they do fine. Not sure what happened. We do know that more parents than teachers feel safe going back into the schools, hence the first survey. Maybe you could share the survey results with us and see what happens. That would be, I mean, a lot of people wanna know what the plan is. We have, something has to give, my son alone does not want to do remote, half the parents on here, we had a petition that's, I'll send to you, over a hundred and thirty-eight parents want their kids to go back. We honestly feel safe, I work in the healthcare system, I know COVID, I have kept my family safe being exposed to COVID patients daily. You can clean a room in a half an hour and do a tur- a turnover with the correct equipment to clean. I see it happen every day with exposure of COVID. I'm just gonna keep it brief, I'm sorry, but we all know the kids have to go back. Other communities are going back, for those parents who don't wanna send their kids back and don't feel safe and kids are thriving, continue to keep your kids at home, or maybe help the parents who can't do this. I'm on my third babysitter because there are not enough services out there. The Y's and all the other things have two teachers to twenty classrooms, like to twenty students. I'm not sure why it's not okay for that to happen in the school system, but for an aftercare program or for a daycare setting where there haven't been numbers. Um, just wanted to keep it brief, say my piece. Talk for a lot of other parents, we want these kids back. Education is essential, just like my job. I can't say to you, I don't feel safe, I'm sorry, could you please watch this YouTube video to how to do your own surgery? Doesn't work like that, since day one, I have never left. It is my job to help COVID patients, even though I work in the operating room, I have left it and been to other floors and to other services to help them in this time. This is what you're supposed to do in a pandemic, get together and help. These children need help, these children are struggling, parents are struggling, and there aren't resources. Yes, uh, my son's teacher is amazing, I could reach out, I know it's, they just give you more work. My child is learning from me, from my mother, from a babysitter and from a teacher. Three different ways, four different ways, he's getting confused, it's not a proper education. We all know it, it's come to a decision, you have plans in place, as you say. So if you have the results from the survey, we should get back in there or, you know, let's skip some things in the agenda and just get right to the transitioning, cause that's why we're all here tonight. Thank you, but I, I do have to go, I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep this on, like, I gotta go, gotta go do a surgery with a positive COVID patient. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay, I appreciate your comments. Okay, so that's the end of public comment, thank you, everybody who participated in that and made your concerns and thoughts known to the committee. Um, we'll move on to approval of minutes for January twenty-first, twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one open session. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any concerns, corrections, uh, thoughts on these? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Uh, wanna start with Stephanie?
Stephanie Clardy, aye.
Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien?
James O'Brien, aye.
Okay, Indy Catterall, aye, it's approved unanimously. We are now gonna move on to communications, uh, actually reports from the superintendent.
Before we start, is, is the chat turned off?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I've turned the chat off.
Alright. Uh, do you have anything for communications, Scott, are you moving right into?
Ready to go right into, uh, actually right into bi-weekly metrics, we don't have any, no personnel changes since our last meeting two weeks ago either.
Okay, great, okay. Alright, right in a bi-weekly metric, right.
And so as we've been doing throughout, uh, really throughout the years, we've been looking at these metrics on a, on a pretty regular basis. Um, basically at every meeting. And the, the trend data, as people have referenced this evening a little bit through public comment, is that the numbers are trending in the right direction. So Carver right now, I know last report is still considered a right community. Uh, but our number of our current case count is down to forty-five. Uh, the average daily incident rate per hundred thousand over the last fourteen days is twenty-six point two. I'm gonna actually reference this number again later on, uh, as we start talking about, uh, some of the CDC, uh, the new CDC recommendations in terms of transitioning students back in the school. And our percentage of positivity is also down at five point two seven percent. Uh, you know, still maintains us as a right community. And you, as you look at each individual community around us, the data we've been looking at, you know, it's a similar trend. People, everybody's trending down a little bit, though several of the communities still around us, like Middleborough and Plymouth, are still right communities as we are still a right community. Uh, but many of the area communities are seeing lower numbers, uh, than they've seen since really the beginning of thing, uh, the beginning of December and Thanksgiving. Uh, and that's actually pretty consistent across the board. You know, looking here at Middleborough, the last time they, you know, this is the lowest number they've had since December tenth. Um, for really actually all of their numbers, except for percentage of positivity was a little lower last week. And that's pretty consistent as you look through this data. Uh, that many communities are showing their lowest numbers, uh, that they've shown since that same timeframe. You know, when you go back and look at, uh, Plington, Plington is the same, December seventeenth was the last time their numbers were this low. Uh, Plymouth seeing the same trend, looking at that December tenth, December seventeenth timeframe is when their numbers were that low. Uh, so it's pretty consistent across the board, that we, you know, we saw kind of a second surge. Uh, and now we're kind of on the backside of that second surge. And then the positive trend data, the positive cases, the number of active cases, now the percentage of positivity are really consistent with what the numbers were, uh, at the beginning of December across the board. Uh, also just wanted to show you the Carver Board of Health number, which over the last seven days, so over the last seven days, it's only been sixteen, uh, positive cases. Um, and, uh, you know, home count on, in fifteen homes, which is the lowest number. You know, they started tracking the data this way on a seven-day basis on January first. So it's not really comparable to the numbers in December, uh, because that ca- that case count was coming out, uh, over a two-week period. Uh, they started doing a one-week period on, on January first. But that is clearly the lowest numbers, uh, that the Carver communities had from the Board of Health, uh, since January first. So any questions on kind of the overall, uh, metric data?
Not for me.
Yeah, I, I know, we've looked at this, this is just this data from the state report in a different way from the WCVB website. Uh, but they've been pretty consistent in putting this data out. And I think some of the, some of their charts that we've looked at the last few weeks really just show, does show that kind of overall trend that's happening. But sometimes it takes a second for it to load, so I'll give it a second to keep loading here.
All the advertisements.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not loading up. Alright, so we'll look at something else for a second, then we'll come back to that and see if it loads a little bit better. Um, you know, the Department of Public Health report, uh, really, the, in terms of looking at this, this data, this report that we've pulled up, it's really got it extracted out that it's really in the weekly metrics, I've said this last two times, I actually think we kind of pulled this report to look at. And we don't necessarily need to look at this anymore, because the data is actually better reflected in the weekly metrics, it's better reflected in the WCVB report. Uh, it's better reflected in. It's better reflected in the WCVB report. Uh, it's better reflected in our own attendance tracking. You know, it's really, this is just the time by time account that we pull the weekly metrics out of. But I figured I'd pull it, pull it up. Let's see if we get any more on this. There we go, it's starting to load slowly. You know, so yesterday in Massachusetts, there was one thousand one hundred and fifty cases reported, but this is. These are trendy. I'd like to show you that, you know, just showing that clear evidence of we had the first surge, uh, in April and May. Had a summer period, had this large second surge. You can see that we're truly clearly on the down, downward side. Uh, in terms of number, that that's just number of positive cases. But when you look at any of the graphs, they show that same trend data. Uh, so this is percentage of positivity. You know, we see that same trend. Now, obviously the spike was a little higher for percentage of positivity in the spring as compared to recently. But we're on, it looks like we're on the backside of that. Hopefully we continue on that trend of seeing the numbers come down in terms of cases. Okay, this is loading very slow. There's the map, uh, which we've always referenced the map, and this has had a huge change. You know, when we looked at this two weeks ago, all of Southeastern Massachusetts was red. Uh, and I think there was one, I think Plington was yellow or green and everything else was red. Now we've had a shift. Now we still have this band of red communities in Plymouth and Carver, in Middleborough, Lakeville, in Taunton. Uh, but there's clearly been a shift in terms of indicating those numbers, the numbers are on the downward trend. Even when we're looking at hospitalizations. You know, you can see that clear same spike, that same trend data. Again, a lot higher in the spring for hospitalizations and number of people who are intubated in intensive care. But again, we had a second spike and we seem to be on the backward side of that. Uh, so I think these graphs really represent the fact that, uh, you know, right now the trend data says we're moving in a positive direction. And case counts are down across Massachusetts and, and across our region. Any questions on the weekly metrics or the WCVB reports? And our, our own attendance tracking and COVID dashboard are gonna show similar things, a similar theme.
Anybody? Let's see anybody. Okay, no. Let's continue on.
In terms of attendance tracking, we're gonna have, we have the best numbers that we've had in a long time today. Uh, after the February break. Hopefully we'll continue that way. I know there was some concerns before that we'd see a little uptick after February vacation. You know, right now, um, so as of today, I lost it there for a second. You know, amongst students, we had two active cases and twelve students quarantined. We only had, we had one staff member with an active case and no staff members quarantined. You know, when you compare that to the numbers the couple of weeks before February vacation, that's a little bit of a vast difference. You know, we had thirteen, fifteen, five, four, ten active cases. Quarantines was in the fifties and forties. You know, so those numbers are all trending in a positive direction as well. Uh, and then the COVID dashboard gives that same reflection. Uh, we as, we agreed in our last meeting, we'd start updating the dashboard on Mondays and Thursdays. So this dashboard is updated as of today. Uh, so this was where we stood at the end of the day today. Very similar to the numbers we just saw. Uh, so these are really good numbers. These are the best numbers we've seen in, in several, really a couple of months. Uh, same theme of going back to, uh, right now, we're seeing the best numbers we've seen since the beginning of December. In terms of number of active cases, number of people in quarantine, uh, both at the elementary school, uh, and at the middle high school. And the high school right now has nine students in total quarantine, but that's a lower number than we've had in a long time. Uh, and no, none of the district staff. Uh, so, you know, the, looking at these biweekly metrics, uh, obviously we've got a theme here. Uh, that we're seeing a positive trend in terms of cases going downward. Hopefully that trend will continue. And then we're on the backside of the second surge. Any questions before I go into planning for transitioning?
No. I think we're all set. So the data.
Okay, I, I wanna start by, uh, talking a little bit about some guidance documents that have come out since our last meeting. So on February twelfth, uh, the CDC released COVID nineteen guidelines for reopening schools. Uh, the goal was to provide strategies for schools to open safely and remain open to achieve the benefits of in-person learning. That was the stated goal of the CDC report. And there's been a lot of publication about the CDC report. You know, there's been a lot of the news about it. There's been a bunch of articles about what they. Were promoting and what their guidelines are for reopening schools. On a ten thousand foot view, the guidelines, in essence, have identified what they're calling essential elements to reopening schools. And then also supporting elements, which obviously support a safer transition for everybody. Uh, I do want to say that I do some, at some points, I feel like some of the, especially the headlines, uh, in newspaper articles. And some of the news stories you see, you know, on TV or, or in various formats. You know, they would kind of say CDC wants kids back in school. And if you really read through the guidelines, I think that the focus really here is. They're making a clear statement in the CDC guidelines that they don't feel students should be remote. Uh, and that's in-person learning can and should be happening really, especially at the elementary level. Uh, we're gonna get into, get into this a little deeper as we go on. Uh, but in essence, they are recommending that no matter what your case count is, there should be some level of in-person learning at the elementary level. There's still, they still have a position where they advocate for remote at the middle and high school level. Uh, and we'll talk about why the distinction between middle, high school and elementary. And I'm gonna talk about that because I don't think it also makes, it makes a distinction for us. Uh, as a school community, as a school district, as we look at, uh, transitioning to bringing more kids back into school. Because I think some of this has been touted as the CDC is really saying all kids need to be back full in person. Uh, and I don't necessarily feel like that's, that was not my interpretation of reading the document. It's really saying all students should be doing some in-person learning. Uh, but I'll get into that as we go through it. So we're gonna hit each of these essential elements I'll talk about and each of the supporting elements. So these five factors here will go into a little more depth on each one. Uh, so essential element number one, mitigation strategies to reduce transmission. There's not a lot new here. Um, all things that we're already doing and, well, most of the things we're already doing and practicing within the Cal Public Schools. Universal wearing of face masks, uh, K through twelve. Physical distancing, and this has been a point of contention a little bit in the CDC guidance. As you read through the document, in many, many places, they reference that their recommendation is six feet of social distancing. Then we're gonna find out as we go forward, eventually they're gonna make a recommendation depending on. Uh, they've also established color codes and depending on what color code your community is in. They're gonna recommend in-person or hybrid learning. And in that doc, when you get to that point in the document, they kind of make this distinction that I've highlighted here. And there, there's actually been a lot of stories about this in the news, that the document itself is ki- kind of contradictory. Because it says six feet of social distancing, six feet of social distancing, six feet of social distancing. But then there's this little caveat. If physical distancing of at least six feet amongst all students, teachers and staff within a class is not possible at all times. The school should ensure physical distancing of six feet between classes and cohorts at all times. So what they're saying is, you know, to do in-person learning, they realize most schools can't have kids full in person at six feet. They just don't have, there's not many schools that have the space to do that. So they make this kind of caveat of, well, you can go under six feet within a class. As long as you're maintaining the social distances between those classes and between those cohorts. Uh, and that's kind of the distinction they make in the document. And it plays a little bit into our discussion of elementary and eventually middle high school. At the elementary school, it's definitely easier to maintain six feet of social distancing between different classes. Because most of the kids are, they're in one class and that's where they are. And yes, they're transitioning to lunch, they're transitioning to recess, but there's a lot more opportunities to maintain that social distancing between classes. Even though it may not be six feet within the class, if that makes sense. That's more challenging at the middle and high school level, and that's why you're gonna see later on some of their recommendations. That there's a little bit more of a leniency to staying in a hybrid model or a remote model in some specific situations. At the middle and high school level versus the elementary level. Because of this distinction of maintaining six feet of social distances between classes instead of within a class. And I'm gonna stop there for a second to see if that made sense, if someone has questions about it. And, and a little bit of the contradictions in these new guidelines by the CDC.
That's basically to isolate the individual class or cohort themselves in case something happens, in case someone gets.
Right, so to say that there is a transmission, you're not crossing that transmission over into several classes. It just impacts one class because you realize that within that class, you may not be meeting a six foot social distancing standard.
It's funny, that went, that kind of went, I don't know if you remember or not, I brought up the, where I read about the bubble. Model of, of grouping kids together and letting them be their own partners in the educational bubble. If they had to isolate those kids, they would just be those kids, and maybe the teacher, but.
About this distinction within their guidance on the six feet of social distancing.
I can't see Stephanie, uh.
Just making sure, I just take a chance. Throughout this presentation, I'm gonna kind of take some breaks to answer questions where I think like it makes sense.
Yeah, it's great, yeah. I think we're all set.
Okay. Uh, and then obviously there are other mitigation strategies or all things we're doing, practicing regular hand washing and hygiene. Regular cleaning and sanitizing of facilities, uh, use doing contact tracing. You know, advocating that people stay home when they're sick and following isolation and quarantine guidelines. Which are all things we're already practicing within the Cal Public Schools. So their second essential item was review of community transition data. Uh, trans- sorry, transmission data. And you can see they've actually developed a color coding system. Very similar, well, not similar to, uh, what Massachusetts has done. They base it on the past seven days, where the Massachusetts data that we just looked at is based on fourteen days. Uh, but in essence, they say this, you know, it can be blue, yellow, orange or red. Right now, Carver, based on our transmission rates, would be a yellow community. So we've had twenty six point two, uh, cases per one hundred thousand. Over the last fourteen days, because that's, we don't have the data available to us for seven days. Because the state, the state data that we just looked at, the state metrics is only based on fourteen days. And then same with percentage of positivity, they're saying seven days. Uh, again, our state data is based on fourteen days. But based on these two numbers, they would, the CDC would identify Carver right now as a yellow community. And they're saying like we've been doing throughout, that every two weeks. You know, every time the school community meets, they should kind of review where you are. And if there's a huge change, you know, if all of a sudden we went from a moderate to a high, we might want to consider a change in. A model that's being offered. So what are their recommendations? Based on color. And we're gonna focus on the elementary school. Is a full in person with physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible. And this again becomes that area where you feel like there's a little contradiction when you read the document. The document really pounds home the whole six foot of social distancing. And you'll hear some people's reference and say, the new CDC guidance says six feet of social distancing. And it does, except it has these kind of caveats. Six feet or more to the greatest extent possible, six feet or more in a. But if you can't do it in the classroom, make sure you're doing that six feet or more between classes. Uh, or making sure that classes aren't contacting each other within six feet. Uh, so right now, based on blue or yellow, they'd say six feet or more with full in-person learning, uh, to the greatest extent possible. If you're orange, they'd be recommending a hybrid model where six feet of social distancing in essence would be a requirement from their perspective. Same with red. What you notice about elementary schools is they do not actually have a recommendation for remote at all. Uh, and going through the document, they're in essence saying that some in-person learning should be occurring at all elementary schools. At the middle and high school level, they do recommend remote if you are red, uh, if you are a right community. And interestingly enough, if you went back and looked at this, if you went back and looked at January. We would have met their criteria for red for several weeks in a row, really for a good part of the month of January. And, you know, obviously the middle high school did have to go remote for a week, uh, in January based on where we were. So it does kind of make that distinction between that some of these things in terms of social distancing. Connections with kids, the amount of crossover between classes is just more challenging at the middle high school level than it is at the elementary level. And the guidance recognizes that. So. The supporting elements. Now, supporting elements, many of them, we are actually, we're doing many of these things. Uh, so the first one from the CDC guidance was diagnostic testing for all symptomatic students, teachers and staff. We have that available to us. If someone is symptomatic, we do have the ability to test them. Uh, screening testing for all teachers and staff offered on a weekly basis. Uh, so we, as we talked about in our last meeting, we're gonna be doing pool testing for all teachers and staff. Uh, we're actually beginning that tomorrow. Uh, so this is our first week of pool testing, so we're gonna be implementing this supporting element. Uh, screening testing for all students offered once a week if your community is yellow, orange or red. Uh, we are currently not offering screen testing for all students. But their recommendation would be, that would be a good supporting element to do if you are a yellow, orange or red community. And then vaccination for teachers and staff as a supporting element. Uh, and I just want to give you a little bit of an update, uh, on vaccination. You know, and I will say that I do not have any more information than any person who's at this meeting. Uh, so what I'm gonna say right now is just based on my own, uh, reading of articles and watching the news. The Department of Education, Department of Public Health has not given superintendents any inside information. Uh, or additional information that, that has been given to the community as a whole. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna tell you what you've probably already heard in the news. Which is that, you know, in essence, we've, Massachusetts just opened up vaccination for those sixty five and older, sixty five to seventy five. And those people who have two, um, medical complications that could make them at risk. The state's estimating that could be nine hundred thousand to a million people, uh, would be eligible for this round. Uh, they just opened it up last Thursday. You know, the estimates I've heard is that this round's gonna take four to six weeks to implement fully, uh, for everyone to get their first shots. Uh, and that they, then they would consider opening up the next phase. Uh, teachers are in the next phase, so teachers are, teachers and all staff who work at public schools are in phase two C. Or are currently in phase two B. Uh, so, you know, based on listening to news reports, reading articles. You know, the sense is that vaccination for teachers, um, will most likely hopefully be open by the beginning of April. Uh, you know, obviously, again, that's just me culling information from what's out there in the community. You know, I would love to present a plan tonight for transitioning that was connected to the vaccination of teachers. Uh, I think, uh, that would go a long way in terms of easing some of the concerns of our staff, and I think it's a legitimate concern. You know, we, we've heard a lot of people receive, we've heard a lot of different opinions and a lot of different perspectives. Uh, but there is a little, I don't know many professions, I don't know many people. Who are going into work into a room the size of a classroom with fifteen to twenty people and staying there for all day. Uh, I don't know many workplaces where that, where that's occurring right now. I'm not saying it doesn't occur. But I would say that is not the standing operating procedure of most places right now. And, and asking our teachers to do that, uh, I think vaccination is a huge piece of that. It would definitely increase people's comfort level, uh, if that was in place. And as I said, I would love to be able to bring a plan to you tonight. Have the tied transition to vaccination, especially at the elementary school level. But I just think that's difficult to do because the reality is, I don't have a ti- I don't have timelines, we don't have official timelines. We just here have what we're hearing, uh, from the governor and from the state, uh, in terms of vaccination. Uh, anything on the CDC guidelines before we go on to Dussie's updated guidance?
I don't see any of them.
Okay.
Right.
So this, this is the Dussie guidance, uh, universal way of mask K twelve, uh, which was updated in, uh, December. Uh, used, first it was two twelve, uh, physical distancing, uh, minimum of three feet of social distancing. That's been Dussie's position since school opened. Uh, and, you know, we've had this consistent debate of, uh, three feet versus six feet of social distancing. Uh, you know, use cohort models, pods or hybrid models if you can to maintain physical distancing, limit school visitors. Effective hand washing and hand hygiene, staying home and sick, et cetera. These are all, this is nothing new here. What is new from Dussie is they have changed their transportation guidance. Many districts have cons- have said that transportation is a huge hindrance in terms of being able to bring students back in the school. In some sort of full in-person model. The Department of Education is advocating for a return for more students to be in person. And they are trying to work with districts to have districts have more students return in person. I think that had played a role in the change in this transportation guidance because many districts said the transportation would be a huge block. I think that had played a role in the change in this transportation guidance, because many districts said that transportation would be a huge block. So on February eleventh last Thursday, they updated, a week ago Thursday, for the vacation, they updated the transportation guidance, and they said if you have these three core practices in place, in essence, all capacity limits and physical distancing requirements are lifted. The three core practices are universal way of mass by all students, ventilation, that the windows must be open at least two inches at all times, no matter the weather, rain, snow, shine, and students must be, have assigned seats on the bus. So that they're not, you know, one day sitting next to James, another day sitting next to Jed, another day sitting next to Stephanie, you know, in terms of cross cohorting. So they say if you institute these three practices, in essence, you can go back to normal transportation pre-COVID and put two seats, two kids in every seat, or three kids in every seat, really, whatever your, whatever your standard was in terms of transportation. Any questions on updated transportation guidance?
In that guidance, does, it also suggests that people that can drive their kids to school to do so as, as well, isn't that correct?
Yeah, so there, there's definitely a point of advocacy of if you can provide your own transportation, definitely would encourage you to do that.
Does it cut down on the numbers?
Right. I just wanted, we've looked at this before, this is just the distinction of six feet of social distancing in a classroom versus three feet. This room does have twenty-four desks in it at three feet. We're going to get in later on in terms of, you know, the proposal brings students back in person. We're not going to have any class, the elementary school has twenty-four students, they'll be smaller than that. I actually think we'll be able to do social distancing at four feet, maybe even five feet in some classrooms. We won't have to use this three-foot standard in terms of the desk piece, in terms of dust being separated from each other. But we would not be able to meet the six-foot standard in an in-person, a full in-person model. Same thing at the middle high school, we looked at these, some of these pictures before, that comparison of three feet of social distancing versus six feet of social distancing. So let's get into the survey data. And so staff survey, let's see, we had a wide range of responses, ninety-seven overall. We did this survey in the, in late October, early November, when we were discussing transition before, we had about a hundred responses. Very similar in terms of who responded. You know, what's your current comfort level returning to an in-person model in grades K through five? And approximately mid-buch was the question they were asked. You know, and obviously, you know, thirty-two percent said uncomfortable, and thirty-nine percent said they had reservations. You know, so seventy-one percent of the staff said they have reservations or uncomfortable with returning to a full in-person model. And then do you currently support a transition to full in-person learning for students in K five? Sixty, forty split, so sixty percent of the staff said no, forty percent of the staff said yes. Now, this did change a little bit from November, when we did this survey last time, the split was seventy-six percent said no, and twenty-four percent said yes. And then we actually drilled down a little bit more because we were really looking at K two at that time. And the K two staff were eighty percent no and twenty percent yes. So there has been a little bit of a shift from the staff perspective in terms of is it time to bring students back full in person? Any questions on the staff survey before we go to the parent survey?
Yes, I have a question. Do you have this broken down for like K through two and then three through five or?
I do not. I, so I do not have that tonight in the presentation. Can we get that data? We could, but I don't, it's not part of the presentation.
No problem.
Anything else?
I don't see anybody. Hold on a second. No, I don't see anybody, sorry. Good.
Okay, for the parent survey. We had four hundred and forty-eight families respond. And I'll give you the total number of people, representing how many kids it represented in a second. I had it written down, and I just got to add it up again real quick. So four hundred and forty-eight family responses representing five hundred and ninety-three kids, which is a little over eighty percent. So we had a pretty good turnout, about eighty, eighty percent, you can see it's pretty balanced between the grade levels. We just asked what model your student is in, you know, so we gave this survey to everybody, so fifteen percent of those responded. We're in a full remote model, the other eighty-five were currently in the hybrid model. What is your current comfort level returns in-person learning? You know, so forty-seven percent of the parents said they are completely comfortable with making a return to in-person. And another twenty percent said comfortable. So sixty-seven percent, really almost sixty-eight percent of the parents said they were either completely comfortable or comfortable returning full in person. And then do you currently support a transition to full in-person learning? It was seventy-three percent to twenty-seven percent, so seventy-three percent yes, twenty-seven percent no. This number changed a little bit from November. When we looked at November, it was actually a seventy-five, twenty-five split. So we actually had a little bit, a two percent shift to no compared to when we asked a similar question in November. And then we did ask, you know, if we did, if the school committee did vote tonight to return some more students in person, you know, like, would you make the switch? And this data helped drive the next section of the presentation, where we're going to look at each individual grade level and talk about the structure of the grade level, the size of in-person classes, you know, the size of remote classes. And obviously, this isn't, this was just a survey, that if we do vote an in-person model, I would do something very similar to what I did in August, I'd send a letter out tomorrow with very specific detailed information for families. And then I'd ask them to, if they're going to change models, to notify us, to fill out a form saying, I am going to go from in-person to remote, I'm going to go from remote to in-person. Our overall total was about seventeen more students in remote, but we had kids going both ways in the survey. So some students were going to go from full in-person to remote, some students were going to go from remote to full in-person. And we'd also ask them about transportation, they get a lot of questions to respond to.
Scott, how many, how many students do you think that green represents, or parents, I mean?
I believe the numbers here were thirty-seven and twenty. But it's reflected in the next section, and you'll see it. So I took all the numbers, and we did it grade by grade, how many, how many kids will be in person, how many kids will be remote, how many teachers will have in person, how many teachers will have remote, so I can dig into the data in more detail in the next section.
Okay.
Any questions on the parent survey?
I don't see any.
So the second part we did ask, I almost forgot about that, I almost forgot about the question, is we were looking at the possibility of an option of doing a half-day kindergarten versus full day, we'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. Obviously, the parents were supportive of a full-day kindergarten model if we went full in person. And we had eighty responses, and right now we only have a hundred and one kids in kindergarten, so that's very consistent with our eighty percent of parents who responded. So here we go, for in-person, this is what it's going to look like. And this is, this is important in terms of parents thinking about this, and I think there's been discussion about this, but I don't know if everyone's fully aware. The reality is, any, any transition to an in-person model is going to require, and I'm going to say that word again, it's going to require that some students, teachers change. Because our goal is to minimize class size and utilize our staff to the best of our ability to do that. So in doing that, we're going to create, we're going to, in essence, take the hybrid teacher currently and make them an in-person teacher. But if we're making the hybrid teacher an in-person teacher, we have to give them some students. So that, that's, those students are going to come from the other classes. So it's going to be a requirement that some students are going to have to change classes when we make this transition. So first grade, on the left side is what is currently happening, that's our class size, our number of students who are currently in person, number of hybrid teachers, number of in-person teachers, number of remote teachers. It is interesting, in the survey, we had three students say they were going to go full remote, and we had three students say they're going to go full remote to in-person. So the total number in person stayed the same, hundred and four. But now we have six in-person teachers because the hybrid teacher will become an in-person teacher. And our average class size will be sixteen to eighteen students. And that's why I'm saying, you know, sixteen or seventeen desks in one of those classrooms, we can do it four feet, maybe five feet of social distancing. And then the remote teacher would stay the same with twenty students. And then we have this information for each grade level. In grade two, we had a shift of plus one student in person. And I will say, I'm just, this just gives you the total, in each grade level, there were kids moving both ways. Kids saying they were going to go to remote, kids saying they were going to go to in-person. But the overall change was plus one for in-person for second grade. Again, the hybrid teacher would become an in-person teacher, so we'd go from five in-person to six in-person. Same average class size about sixteen, eighteen, with the remote teacher staying at a class size of twenty-four. Grade three, we had a transition of only three students to, from in-person to remote based on the survey data. Here, we would stay with five in-person teachers. So third grade, under what's happened, now again, there's no promises here, because this is all based on the survey. When people really have to answer these questions, if the school committee votes this tonight, when I send out the letter tomorrow, we might get a little different response. And I, I would come back to the school committee and present what the real numbers are versus what the projected numbers are. So right now, on this projection in third grade, we'd stay with the same five in-person teachers. So no one would have to change teachers in third grade. Again, I don't want to make that a promise, I don't want anybody to say, hey, Mr. Neese said on August twenty-second, third grade won't have to change teachers. That's just based on the numbers we have right now. And what we would do is we'd have the hybrid teacher become a remote teacher, because the class, the remote size, the remote class was going to go to twenty-seven kids, sorry, I skipped ahead. And we had concerns about moving to a remote class of twenty-seven students. So we thought in this grade it made sense, our class size is still good, you know, that's sixteen or seventeen, that it made sense to have that person transition become a second remote class and actually split the remote class. Fourth period is where we had our biggest movement to remote. So we went from a hundred and fifteen in-person to a hundred and five, but it's also our largest grade with a hundred and thirty-eight students. So we'd still have the hybrid teacher become an in-person teacher with an average class size of eighteen to twenty, which is still our biggest average class size. And we create two remote teachers. This remote teacher would have to be an additional position, we'd have to hire somebody to become the second remote teacher. And go to class, because this, you know, a transition there is going to bring your remote class size to thirty-two kids. Now, another option we can consider, so I put it down there, but it's not really my recommendation. My recommendation is for us to look to hire a second remote teacher. But to do it with our current staff, we could have a combo. In essence, third and fourth grade remote makes sixty to sixty kids, based on these projections. So we could have a third grade remote class with twenty kids, a fourth grade remote class with twenty kids, and a, and an optional like third, fourth grade crossover class remote with twenty kids. But to me, that makes less sense than looking to hire an additional, additional staff member and having two remote teachers in third grade and two remote teachers in fourth grade. But we'll see how those numbers work out when people really have to say yes or no. Grade five, same concept, we did have a little bit of a transition here from ninety-nine in-person, ninety-two, but our remote teacher right now only has twelve, so they would go to nineteen, that's a manageable number. We, the hybrid teacher would become an in-person teacher, average to class size sixteen to eighteen. So we see some real consistencies here, we're seeing, you know, six in-person teachers, we're seeing class sizes, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. We're seeing one or two remote classes around twenty students. All right, kindergarten, if we went to full day, we said there was a negative, eighty-four in-person to eighty-one in-person. Kindergarten right now would have, this is actually a mistake here, this is always supposed to be four in-person, oh, sorry, go back. So I apologize, that, right now is only four in-person teachers. So the hybrid teacher would become an in-person, there'd be five in-person teachers, average class size of fifteen and seventeen, stay with the run remote teacher for nineteen in kindergarten. We did have a discussion about doing a half-day kindergarten program, and I want to talk about the rationale for that a little bit. This was, this happened administratively with the, with the classroom teachers. A lot of this, a lot of the kindergarten curriculum is really based upon social emotional competencies and social learning competencies. And some of the stuff that they would normally do for their social learning competencies, they can't do with other restrictions in terms of social distancing in COVID-nineteen. So it's a lot of play-based centers, right now, the kids, a lot of times in kindergarten, go off to a play-based center by themselves. So the teachers were saying, the teacher's point of advocacy was, it, it makes sense to have it be an academically focused half-day program. And, and keep smaller class sizes, and, you know, half-day kindergarten is what happened for many years. Most of us probably went to a half-day kindergarten program, if even went to one. And I'm not saying we'd recommend this full-time, but they're saying we should at least think about it and discuss it as we look at making a transition to in-person, that it might actually make sense to do half-days on a cohort model four days a week. But I'm going to say that right now, the recommendation is going to be for a full day, full in-person kindergarten. Cafeteria, you know, we have to maintain six feet of social distancing there. Right now, we can fit a hundred and ten students in the cafeteria at six feet. Our goal would be to maintain five lunches and use alternative spaces. So we're going to have to use some alternative spaces for lunches, including the stage, probably the project areas. And we're, you know, again, it's, it is in the end based on what the final numbers are for each grade. But the administration has developed a lunch program and a lunch plan for the cafeteria to use alternative spaces throughout the building and maintain five lunches. Obviously, you put it here, on the nice days, we might have some students throw outside for lunch and use that as well. I know the other thing people are probably concerned about is, you know, staggered start and dismissal. So there's a, we, we actually believe, we have to see the real final numbers, but we believe we'll be able to do drop-off the way we've done it from eight to eight-twenty-five, and it may not need to change. We do think we're going to have to create two groups for pickup. You know, many of you are involved in the pickup process right now, it's long, it's a long line. You know, if we have, if we double that number, or even if we don't double that number, you know, it's going to be hard to manage. So we're going to have to, in essence, establish two groups for pickup, a group one and a group two. And right now, tentatively, we'd say the group one pickup would be two fifteen to two thirty-five. The group two pickup would be two forty to three o'clock. Ultimately, we need the information of what families are going to do for transportation to finalize this. And if the school committee did vote full in-person return, we'd make a formal presentation for drop-off and pickup at our next meeting on Monday, March eighth. Mrs. Masters would put a plan out to the community with the details of who's in group one, who's in group two, what that would look like. And so more information to come on this, but, you know, so as I said, some of it depends on the numbers, but, you know, philosophically, we're feeling like it's going to have to be a two-group process, that we won't be able to say this is everybody's dismissal time at the, at the elementary school.
Yeah, separated by five minutes between groups there, so that's not bad.
Well, yeah, but obviously, two fifteens are kind of an early pickup time, but we'll, we'll look at that, and we're going to stagger it out, and we'll, we'll develop a formal plan based on that. You know, ultimately, making these decisions, you know, what we are currently doing is working from a health and safety perspective, we've talked about this many times. We've reduced our number of close contacts, we're in general maintaining the six feet of social distancing. There's been limited evidence of community spread within the schools. You know, that key question of six feet versus three feet of social distancing, more students in person means there's going to be more close contacts. You know, we're going to, you have to figure out that factor that some elementary students will have to have new teachers. We're going to have, probably have an increase in students who decide to go fully remote. It all comes back to that balancing test of balancing, and this one, I think everybody was communicating earlier this evening as parents smoke, we, we were hearing that balancing test. It's balancing the health and safety of the entire school community, including staff and teachers and, and kids and their own families, because they're exposed, when the kids, if the kids exposed at home, sorry, if the students. Because they're exposed, when the kid, if the kid's exposed at home, sorry, if a student is exposed in school, when the family is exposed at home, it is a community health, safety position versus the struggles that people have faced in remote learning, and especially the challenges that have been faced in remote learning in our younger grade levels. And I'm not saying those challenges don't exist across the board, they do. We have had, parents have had concerns about remote learning at all grade levels. But definitely, it's been more prominent at the elementary school grade levels, especially the younger elementary grade levels. And that, and that really comes down to a maturity standpoint of just where people are developmentally. You know, highs, in general, and, you know, you don't always wanna speak in generalities, but in general, middle and high school students are more prepared to handle remote learning than first, second, and third graders are. And again, there's some, I'm sure there's some first, second, and third graders who are thriving in remote learning. And there's some juniors and seniors who are struggling on, on remote learning. But in general, that tends to be the pattern. I'd love to have a plan to tie transitioning to vaccination. That's not what I have for you tonight. I wish that we were vaccinating teachers sooner. You know that the school, myself as superintendent, has been advocating for that. I signed on to a couple of different letters to the governor from area superintendents, saying, please, move the teachers up if you, if you're, if you're really wanting in-person return, and you want everybody on board with that in-person return, maybe not everybody, but a larger percentage of people on board with that in-person return tied to vaccinating teachers, and push them up the list. But the reality is that's, that hasn't happened. And if I was gonna give you a plan that was tied to transitioning based on vaccination, I'd have to be putting out dates that were in late April, maybe early May, realistically. Unless something drastically changed in the next couple of weeks, which they might, you know, things change all the time. We're, we're all, we're all adjusting on the fly. You know, so it's all these things we have to consider. I do believe, you know, the numbers are down, we're trending in the right direction. But we're gonna have positive cases in school. We're in full in-person, we're gonna have more close contacts, we're gonna have more quarantine in classes. Just a reality. Because we're gonna be closer to three feet than we are close to the six feet, or at least at four or five feet. We're gonna be within that six feet of social distancing. But it's balancing that against the needs of the community, the needs of the students, the challenges the students are facing. And, and ultimately, you know, so in the end, what, what would be our recommendations? The committee asked me to bring a recommendation for making a transition. The recommendation would be to transition students in K through two, starting on March fifteenth. Transition three through five, two weeks later on March twenty-ninth. That the transition would be a full-day kindergarten program, not a half-day kindergarten program. From the beginning, I've promoted that we would maintain half-days, Wednesdays district-wide until the full district is back. K through twelve, so it would be a four days in-person, one day remote. As other part of my recommendation here is that, if you remember, we actually kept two professional days kind of in the bag. We held them in reserve. And we actually specifically, when we worked with the teachers, said that we would use those professional days in transitioning models if appropriate. And so there's a recommendation here that Friday, March twelfth, would be a professional day for K through two staff, to give them a day prior to a full-in-person model on March fifteenth. Three through five would go to school that day in the hybrid model, they're in hybrid. So your three through five kids would go on Friday, March twelfth. It would only be the K-two students who did not go that day, but then they would return full in-person on March fifteenth. And then same thing for the transition for three through five, is that we'd have a professional day on March twenty-sixth, the Friday prior to transition for three through five. At that point, if the school committee voted this model, K-two would be full in-person. K-two would go to school on March twenty-sixth. And so then, the whole staff would have a professional development day. We'd just split it up, half the staff would do it one day, half the staff would do it another day. You know, there's some other staff, and then we'd have to look at our nurses, therapists, counselors. We'd have to decide what days, which day they took for their professional day. And we would balance that off between, you know, the two groups. So that is, that is the proposal. I guess at this point, I'll open it up to questions, comments, thoughts? A motion?
Hold on a second, we've got to go down the line. All right, does anybody have a comment or question on Scott's presentation on? I'd like to go first, does anybody have anything? Or someone like to make a motion based on his presentation?
I'll make the motion. All set?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I move that we proceed with the proposed timeline and recommendations that Superintendent Neese just made, following the dates as listed on his slide. Do you need me to go into more detail, Andy?
Um, the only thing we, well, no, the full, full-day kindergarten is here on the recommendation, okay? That was the only thing I was gonna bring up.
Okay.
Uh, if you go and make whatever motion you would like to make, Stephanie.
Okay, I'll just be a little bit more specific. So I mean, I know Gina can just copy it from the slide. But I, I propose that, that we transition K through two in March fifteenth, and then three through five on March twenty-ninth, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
Okay.
And in a second. Now we're gonna open it up for discussion. Anybody have any comments on the motion or Scott's presentation, or which is basically the same? Down here, hold on a second.
Jason raises his hand.
Jason, sorry.
Thank you. Scott, this was exactly what we were looking for when we asked for like the level of detail when it comes to all the pieces that we discussed before. So appreciate the work that really went into this. I have one question, I might, I have a leading question, just out of curiosity. So were the dates that you proposed shared to anyone in the public before tonight?
So the only way the dates were shared is, I will say that I did have a meeting with the elementary faculty today. I felt that they should hear what I was gonna say this evening. So I did present those dates to the elementary faculty, faculty at the end of the school day today, saying this would be a proposal. In essence, I went through, I went through this overall presentation, because I felt that they should hear it prior to the school committee.
That's fine, I was only asking because this would have been another time where, you know, information that wasn't public made it to the public before the meeting, and that concerned me on a different, whole different topic that we can discuss at a different time. I think, so there is.
If I, if I, I'm sorry, Jason, I just have a half-second more to address that.
Yeah.
So I will say that that is not the normal course of action. I generally don't bring every presentation that I would make to the school committee, to members of the staff. I do feel like, you know, there's a, there's that kind of sacred balance of the school's commission here, a presentation. But I also feel like, based on just what's happened with the pandemic, it's just an unusual circum, circumstance. It's not something that happens. Hopefully, there's something that we're never gonna go through again. And I just wanna be, I wanna establish clear lines of communication with our staff as we're making these tough decisions. And I did feel like I owed it to them to, to give them a sense of what was gonna be presented this evening.
That's fine, I just, I just wanted to be sure, that's all. That, again, that's something we can talk about.
Oh, Jason, your concerns on that, your concerns on that are noted.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I think, you know, through a lot of the public comment and a lot of the, the new information with the presentation actually changed a lot of what I was going to say. And I had kind of prepared coming into tonight with those new guidelines that came out. I, I do want to address the, you know, the comment about schools being scared to be open. We're following guidelines, we're going through what, what we had to do. If someone gets sick, if something happens, it's on us, based on the decisions that we make. And I don't think that's very clear to a lot of people, like, yeah, we can't just throw the kids back. But if something does happen, and, you know, kids, we have to shut down a whole grade level. We have, you know, someone gets really sick, like, that's on us and, and the decisions that the five of us make. And I think that needs to just be said, because it hasn't been said. And thankfully, nothing has happened. Hopefully, nothing will happen, the numbers are definitely trending in the right way. I am concerned about the low teacher comfort level. We talk a lot about students' social, emotional, and they need to be in school. I completely agree, nothing. And I'll be very clear, because I don't wanna be misquoted on this. I think kids should be in school, but it needs to be under the right circumstances. I'm not saying, no, kids, kids learn better hybrid or kids learn better remote. I am not saying that at all. What I am saying is that we need to do it correctly. And this low, this low number of teacher comfort really concerns me. I think in a month, two months, when the vaccine is out, like Scott mentioned, that number is going to, I bet you it'd be even flipped from where it is now. You know, it's all well and good to have the kids in school, but if we don't have staff in there to teach this, to teach the kids, then they're just gonna have a sub all day, and that, and anyone who's in a school system knows, subs are not easy to come by, and it's not the same as learning from your regular teacher. So I'm concerned that just, you know, having all the students in is going to affect staff as well, and we're looking for highest quality education. I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I'm also concerned about, and this was brought up already, about the community numbers are still on, on the higher side. We've had someone in the public comment, who we even mentioned that, you know, they're, they're not wearing masks and not doing social distancing. And that's kind of the cornerstone of everything that we need to do. When we have community members outwardly saying, I'm not following these guidelines, it, it concerns me because we need to be following these guidelines if we wanna get back to normal. And that's not, and I'm not saying everyone's doing it, and I'm, I'm not saying everyone's not. But it's been vocalized that, you know, it's not happening, and we're seeing it around town. So if we wanna get back to normal, we all need to do not just, you know, families who have school-age kids, but everyone. And I think, I guess, just to wrap up, just because health and safety is kind of, I don't wanna say trumping or taking precedent over education, it, it doesn't diminish it, diminish the importance of student education. It's that fine line between, you know, I, I think a lot of people are asking us to make a decision, what's more important, students getting an education or health and safety? And they, and they need to go hand in hand, so. That, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody else like to comment before a vote? Hold on a second. Stephanie, Stephanie, do you have your hand up? Okay, yeah, sorry. You're recognized.
Thank you, Andy. I just wanna say that, um, I, I agree with Jason. Scott, thank you very much for this level of detail. This is exactly what we did ask for, exactly what I, it's exactly what I think we all needed to see in black and white. And I, I know that the messaging to families will be clear. And people just need to, you know, remain being diligent and following rules as much as they can, and respecting that this is a, you know, a health and safety issue. We've all agreed from day one that the kids, that you, you can't compare in-person learning to online learning, you just can't. Kids learn better when they're in-person, in classrooms with the teachers. So hopefully, we can continue to all work together. You know, hopefully, things will work in the way we all want them to, for everyone involved. So I just wanted to say thank you, Scott, for all of this information. And just to, I, I greatly appreciate how much time and effort went into this, and I know that it's not gonna be easy. But I know, I have faith that there'll be clear communication to families, that they'll have the information that they need. And if they don't, that they know that they can reach out. I'm assuming, I don't wanna assume, actually. If we vote and this passes, um, will the documents be published online for anyone to refer to? Will they, I know you'll send an email for, for people asking.
What will happen is, I mean, I can clearly publish this presentation, put this PowerPoint out. In essence, we have a reopening plan that talks about all the guidance of in-person learning. And there's not a lot that's changed from that reopening plan here. This gets, so I would refer people to the reopening plan that's on the website currently as a plan for in-person, full-in-person learning. Definitely put this presentation on the web. And then also, people are gonna get a detailed letter tomorrow. You know, obviously, I prepared the letter, I'm ready to do that. So it would go off first thing tomorrow morning, that would provide a lot of details to families as well. With knowing that there are some details that's still gonna need to be finalized, like the transportation. We're gonna, if you vote in favor of this, we're gonna treat transportation almost like the beginning of a new year. We're gonna ask every family to fill out a transportation form, yes or no. Yes, I'm taking the bus, no, I'm not taking the bus, even if they're, even if they haven't taken the bus all year. We're gonna treat it, we wanna hear from every single family. And that's what we did in August, and we followed up with families that responded, and we called them, and we do all that piece of it, because the bus routes may have to be redone. Like, in August, you know, the week before school, we might have to publish new bus routes with new bus times, and that's gonna have to happen. And then also, we have to finalize the pickup piece. We think it's gonna be okay for drop-off, we think we'll be able to get everybody through drop-off between eight and eight-twenty-five. And obviously, if that doesn't work well in the beginning, we'll adjust. But we definitely know we're gonna have to have a new pickup routine. So if the school committee did support a March fifteenth transition, March eighth, we will come, sort of like she did at the beginning of school, take a presentation, pick up, we'll send the information to families that week before. So families need to know that they probably will get bus routes and pick up and pop off information a few days before the transition.
Okay.
But that will all, that will all come out to people.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Jen?
All right, my mouse is sticking. Um, I wanna thank Scott for all of the work that went into this. And I wanna thank all the members of our community who have reached out and provided their feedback, both for and against us moving forward with a transitioning plan. The last thing I want is for any teacher to feel like we're, you know, being disrespectful to them or not, you know, hearing them, you know, I'm encouraged that it's a sixty, forty split and not the seventy, thirty that it was in the fall. You know, I'm also, you know, apprehensive and nervous that it wasn't more supportive, but at the same time, I really feel like my job is to vote in the best interest of the children, and I hope that the teachers will ultimately support that as well. And I do feel like, especially our younger kids, need to be in school. And we're coming up on the one-year anniversary of when they were pulled out of school very drastically, with no notice. They went home on a Thursday night, thinking they were going back the next day, and then they didn't. And two weeks has turned into a very long time, and it's been a challenging road. And our school community as a whole, from administrators to teachers, to ESPs, to support staff, to parents, and family members, and, you know, our community has rallied. And we have done a tremendous job to get to where we are today. And hybrid has worked well in some ways. But in a lot of ways, it's, it's still below the mark of where our kids need to be. And we need to look forward to the future, and I think that starts with a baby step. And I think a baby step is bringing in the elementary. We have a state-of-the-art school that is fully equipped with, you know, the best, you know, filtration system and, and all the things, nice big classrooms. No, we won't be at six feet, but, you know, we, they won't be completely crowded upon each other. And, you know, I, I, I do want us to have a conversation about middle high school. It's a separate building, it's an older building, it has completely different challenges. And, and I know there are probably parents wondering why that's not being talked about tonight, and, and that's why it's not being talked about tonight. You know, Ms. Stone's comments during public comment is why middle high school is not being talked about tonight. I think we need to, you know, get our younger kids in who really don't do well on the remote. And if that goes well, you know, I, I definitely wanna have a conversation about middle high school at a meeting very soon. But I'm voting yes on this proposal, because everything in my being says that's the right decision. And I am sorry if anybody's upset at that, I'm not trying to offend or upset anybody, but I'm doing this for the children of Carver.
Thank you, Jen. James, do you have anything? You do.
So there were a lot of comments that were made tonight, and I think people need to realize that I don't think there's a teacher in this district I think people need to realize that I don't think there's a teacher in this district that doesn't care about the kids in this town and don't want to be in school teaching these kids. I don't think there's one of them that wouldn't rather be at their job, doing their job on a daily basis. And, and I think there's a lot of parents who are getting an awakening as to what it's like to actually educate children. And, and, and for you to think that if you're going to send them to school, that it just makes it easier because they're there with all their friends. It's not what it's like. And those teachers work very hard to do the job that they're doing and get through to all those kids in the best situations that they can. And I, and I think there's been a little bit of an awakening as to how difficult that job actually is. And, and I think that you're gonna run into some difficulties and parents need to be aware of that. Because you're gonna put all these kids back into school at the same time. And no matter what you think about social distancing or whether you care about masks or not, there's gonna be a lot of situations where keeping kids apart is gonna be very difficult. And teachers are gonna be put in a much more precarious position to be able to do what they need to do in a safe and effective way. And I think that needs to be appreciated in as much ways as it can. Because with a lot of the comments that were made tonight, I'm not a paid school employee. We're not paid school employees. We don't work for the schools. We're you. When you talk about parents and you talk about kids going to school, we are you. Eleven years ago, somebody came walking into my backyard and told me they were building a solar field out behind my house. That's what got me into politics and after nine years on this committee, this is one of the worst situations that I've ever not wanted to vote for because there is no win. You want your kids back in school, so do we. There's also a lot of people that are very nervous and unsure about this situation and they want their kids safe. And we can't guarantee that when we make these transitions and changes. It's not easy. But I will tell you that in April, there will be a seat open on this committee. And all those of you who want to speak up, you need to step up. You need to get up and be involved in what's going on. Because it's easy to sit back and judge the decisions that are made here. None of us are qualified to make this decision. Not one of us. Collectively, our job is to make a decision for this community the best way that we can. And we are a policies and procedures committee that hires professionals. And Mr. Neef and the staff that he has around him truly care for your kids, our kids. And they put their best commitment to that. And I think that needs to be appreciated a little bit more than it was reflected earlier in the meeting. Because just what you want isn't about the safety of everyone and education is about equity. It's not about what you want. And safety is an important part. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Neef put forth a plan that's reasonable and productive in a way that may not move it the way that everybody wants it to. But it's gonna move it in a direction that's gonna get us back to a sense of normalcy. And it can't be rushed because high school and middle school is very different and even the CDC guidelines promote that. But guidelines are just guidelines. They're not rules. They don't make the standard. They just put out an expectation and hope that it works. And that's what we're gonna be doing with what the decisions that we make. We're gonna be making decisions that we hope that works, but we can't guarantee anything. Jason, you shouldn't feel like this is on us. This is not on us. Eighty percent of this community wants their kids back in school. This is on everybody. We're the ones that are representing the voice and representing the vote of what the people want. And we're basing our decisions off of the recommendations of the professionals that we pay a lot of money to, to do the jobs that they're doing. Nobody is gonna make everybody happy. We're gonna have people that are not happy with whatever decision we make. And I think people need to be a little bit appreciative of the people and the time that's put in. Because we're not paid school employees. We are you. And when you want to get involved, you should step up and get involved because that's how you make the difference. And Mr. Neef, I fully support, as I always have, everything that you choose to do because I know that you hold the safety and welfare of this town at the center of what you're doing. So thank you.
I agree. Thank you, James. I, I totally agree with you. Well, I'll guess I'll do my little comments last and last to go. This has been a long year. As all of you know, I mean, Jen said the kids left on a Thursday and I mean, the first thought that went in my mind is they went into the twilight zone like we all did, you know, and we've been, we've done everything that the government has told us to do to try to stop the spread. You know, we've made sacrifices. All of you have made sacrifices. Teachers and our students and our families and everybody has made sacrifices. And it seems that the goalposts keep moving on us. You know, and I agree with James that we need to get back to a sense of, at least beginning to get it back to a sense of normalcy. Like, so we don't have, you know, it's like James said, we don't have all the answers. We don't, we, we are you. And then, James, that was very well said. I totally agree. But what is the right thing? How do you, how do you alleviate someone's fear? Can we? I don't think we can. All we can do is be honest with you and make the best decision we can make. You know, for the kids, for the families and just look at the facts and look at the, the data. And that's what I've done and the bottom line is this disease, unless you're very old and have comorbidities, you have a, over a ninety-nine percent rate of, of recovering from. I've known, I've have several people in my family who've got, got COVID and recovered and, you know, I know others that were far along and recovered and I know some that died. You know, and it's not fun. So is there a risk? Yes, there is. But these kids only get one education. You only get one time in this life around this, this age to go through this, this part of their lives. And I think we need to do the best we can to educate them and not cheat them out of that, that education that not only that are, that we and our taxpayers pay for, but that all of our educators have trained their whole life for and we trust in. So that's all I have to say. And I, and I, I also want to thank everybody involved and everybody in the administration, Mr. Neef and, and everybody just who've always been there for us and the kids and everybody. So that's all I have to say on that. So, so that being said, we have a motion on the floor and I will call the role, the, the motion is to proceed with Superintendent Neef's recommendation to bring K through two back to full in person on March fifteenth and grade three, five, three through five on March twenty-ninth with full day kindergarten and ma, and to maintain half-day Wednesdays district-wide. And I believe there were two professional days. Half-day remote, sorry. And two professional days. Okay. Okay. Ladies first. Stephanie?
Stephanie Clarity, I.
Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, I.
Jason Greenwood?
Jason Greenwood, no.
James O'Brien?
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Cottrell, I vote aye as well. It's passed four to one. All right. Thank you, everybody, for that, for all the information. Scott, thank you for that presentation and the plan. You know, for all the criticism that you didn't have one and we didn't have one, that was just never true. We had waited for data for a long time and we've been discussing this for a long time, but.
Can I pose a question there through you, Andy?
Sure, James.
So kind of to what Jen had mentioned earlier, I, I'd like to get some kind of focus or discussion on the, on the middle high school as well, but there was a comment that really stuck with me from public comments. And it's something that sort of bothered me throughout this whole process as well. And in, and it's not just this town, but sports are all over the place. Sports, they're having football in the winter time. They're doing everything. And I don't understand why National Honor Society can't hold functions and why these other drama clubs or other committees and other things outside of sports can't start getting together and start doing things. So I would really like that looked at because if we are talking equity, it just doesn't make sense why these groups can do it, but other groups can't. I just don't see that as equitable at all.
I wholeheartedly agree, James. Thank you for mentioning that.
James, I froze up. I didn't hear what you said, all of it. I'm sorry, but can I'm sorry.
Give the five second.
I, I thought, I thought everybody else froze. I realized it was me that froze.
I'd like the discussion to evolve around how other groups and other committees and other things can start to begin to happen like National Honor Society, like drama, like music. Because if all these sports are happening and we're gonna start transitioning kids back, I don't know how we can keep saying to these kids, you know, they can do it, but you can't, you have to zoom. I don't understand the equity there.
I totally agree with you. I mean, I, I know someone who's a, a music teacher in another town and there's a petition going around about having chorus be live again. You know, so, I mean, because band is live, I think band is live now, right?
So band, the, the guidance does allow for band to be done indoors with masks. Guidance currently actually doesn't support the chorus piece, so that's more of a guidance issue. To James's point, some of the other things, absolutely, we could look at them in terms of what's happening. Person versus what's happening.
Andy, I, I think to the, to the compliment of what people are trying to promote is that football is happening live, basketball is happening live, all these other sports are happening live. So the focus shouldn't be minimized to just that direction. These other groups should be allowed to gather and do the same if that's gonna be put to them.
I completely agree.
And what's a part of that too, you know, we did have a, if you remember, we did have a live job production in August. Actually, it was a hundred, hundred, hundred people.
And it was awesome.
So we're, I'm, I'm open to those discussions and will certainly you know, talk to the administration at the middle high school and turn, and the elementary school in terms of having some of these things happen.
Can I, can I just reiterate, Scott, in that presentation, they did a fantastic job, social distancing and adapting to that situation too, in order to make that production happen because it was Mamma Mia. It was a touchy feely play that was practiced up till like school ended the day they were supposed to do the play. Like the day before they were supposed to.
Right. It was, it was that weekend, I think.
Right. So they had practiced totally in the way that the play was designed to be done and they had to adapt and modify that and they did it. They did it so well and kept themselves social distanced and did what they needed to do. And, and I think it was a great example of what can be done when you give them the opportunity to do so.
And I'm fully supportive of that. And I know that, I know that at the middle high school level, I believe some groups are starting to be in person, some of the clubs and activities. Obviously someone brought up a specific concern about National Society. We actually, just to give a little context, we did postpone the National Society section and we changed what we were gonna do a little bit. It is still via Zoom, so it's not an in-person meeting. But we did actually change the structure and how we were approaching that a little bit because of some of that same concern that we did not, this decision wasn't to go in person. But we did revamp the structure a little bit from what was originally proposed. So we are, we are looking at all those things and I'll, you know, I'll talk to the high school administration as we look at, it's because primarily middle high school, there are clubs activities at the elementary as well, but primarily middle high school, we'll take a look there and and, and where possible, you know, begin to expand in terms of in-person opportunities.
And I, and I know this sounds far reaching, but I've used the word equity quite a bit in this conversation. And if, if the discussion evolves around it, I think ways that remote students who choose to be one hundred percent remote, my, you know, any opportunities that can be open for them to be involved in something too is, is something to look into because I, you know, to the, to the best of the ability to get them involved as much as they can.
Right. Scott, I want, well, we, before we leave the topic here, as I stammer along, for the public, for the next round going forward, the, would be the six through eight, I would imagine. Are there other, are there? Do you see a timeline for?
And, and not like, I wouldn't like to present the timeline tonight for that. Obviously that would be the consideration. We'd have to look at whether we want to do. If we were gonna break, this is, this is me speaking extemporaneously. You know, so we've had some general discussions about it, but I would think that if we were gonna do some sort of a transition, it would be six and seven and then eight through twelve, just because that's how they're scheduled. Six and seven follows the same schedule, eight through twelve follows the same schedule. Cause eight through twelve has the block, six and seven doesn't have the block. So, or if we were gonna do some sort of a, a transitioning, it would probably be in that model. And it might be a consideration of going back full in person as well, because it's, the dynamics are just different at the middle high school. Teachers cross over, they teach multiple grades. You know, so then especially eight through twelve. But even some of our, our teachers are teaching multiple grades and they're crossing over and teaching on both schedules. We have teachers who teach both in the block schedule and the non-block schedule for six and seven. So there's a lot of different dynamics we'll have to look at. So I wouldn't want to lay out, I wouldn't want to lay out a strategy tonight. Definitely again, to the community's point of before community saying, well, there's, there's been like no planning happening. I have to assure everybody, there has been all kinds of planning happening throughout the year because we knew we had to be on a transition or had the possibility of transitioning at any time. I've always said that any kind of a vote for a transition, we'd need, that would need two or three weeks to actually make it. Because there's a difference between talking about the theory of a transition and the reality of it. So the reality is tomorrow I'm gonna send a letter to every elementary parent asking them, what are they doing? Are they staying in person? Are they going remote? Because parents have choices. People have choices to make now. Are they using transportation? Are they not using transportation? You know, so they're gonna have information they have to provide us, which will help finalize the plans. But, you know, planning is occurring at, at both levels.
Okay. And just one more thing just popped into my head. I actually thought of it before. The sanitizing schedule in the buildings.
Would not change.
Will not change.
On Sunday, Tuesday nights and Friday nights.
All right, we still have the, the mist, the gun, the mister gun. Okay, that's great. Okay. Does anybody else have anything on this before we go to our next topic? Okay, no one. All right.
I have my hand up.
Oh, oh, sorry, Jason, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to table items. C, D, and E. No, no, I'll scratch that. I moved to table items D, E, and F until the next school committee meeting.
Can I make a comment on your motion? A recommendation?
Go ahead.
I, I think F will be a short presentation, ties a little bit into the budget presentation. So I think we should, I would recommend keeping F and G. We could certainly table the school leaders, project-based learning grant and the school district, school district report cards. But I think we should. I think E, I think F will be a short presentation, but ties it a little bit in terms of G.
All right, then I move to table D and E until the next school committee meeting.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, James.
Second. Oh, James was trying to second.
Sorry, James, I thought you had your hand up. All right, so we have motion in a second. Discussion on table. Jason, is this, is this for time purposes?
Because we still have executive session tonight too. So yes, it is, it has been, it's been a long and intense night. And I think next meeting won't be as intense and it doesn't seem like it's very, I apologize to those who are, who are affected by that. Meredith and whoever was doing E, but.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right, no, I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
I was doing, I was doing E just a while ago.
All right, so we've motioned a table, items D and E. Roll call, vote, and we have a second. Roll call, vote. Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, aye.
James O'Brien?
James O'Brien, aye.
Stephanie Clarity?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jason Greenwood?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
Andy Cottrell, aye. It's unanimous. We'll table that to the next meeting. Okay, so we're gonna go on to F. ESSC, two allocations and coronavirus prevention funds. Let's move on. Hi, Ron.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll be brief with the presentation here as well, especially for these two memos. Superintendent Neef just asked me to give you just an executive summary on two funding sources that have come down, one from the feds and one from the state to support districts, really as we navigate the pandemic. The first one you see in front of you is ESSR two. It's a sister funding, it's follow-up funding from the first set of federal funding that came out really back in March. Give you a quick sense of scale, the feds put out back in March of twenty twenty, about thirteen point two billion for schools. Really just after Christmas, they put out ESSR two, which is fifty-four billion and change across the, across the nation. Substantial increase from their first round of funding. DESI released the RFP just recently. The fund's use is very similar to the way ESSR one was organized and structured. The big focus on ESSR two is the funds emphasize the safer reopening of schools and address learning loss. The window for using the funds is really broad. You can certainly use FY twenty-one as well as all through FY twenty-two and even a small portion of twenty-three. What you see there in your memo, the bottom line is just the, the calculation, the way that the feds and DESI ultimately made the calculation. What you see there in your memo, the bottom line is just the, the calculation, the way that the feds and DESI ultimately made the calculation for our funds. And the way I see is using these resources, a small portion early on in FY22 to cover some of our COVID positions, which I'll talk more about as we explore the balanced budget for level services in FY22. And the remainder of those funds ultimately to give the school district a little bit of flexibility as we look to FY22's school year, so to utilize those funds for a variety of needs that maybe are unanticipated at this moment as we look to, to move forward to the fall.
Any, any questions on?
Yeah, I have a question. Is, is that, Scott, you mentioned the need to expand fourth grade? If, is that where some of that money may come from or?
So if we have to add a position in the fourth grade, it would probably not use these funds. We could either use, actually, we could use, we have some flexibility within our current salary line items. Or we might have the opportunity to use the funds that Ron's going to discuss next. But, but we are going to talk about using some of this in the FY22 budget presentation. That's why I wanted you to see this prior to that presentation.
And James, just to add on to that, hi, everyone. Hey, guys. Do we, don't forget, back in January, we moved over about $45,000, I want to say that was unallocated in FY21 budget. They have flexibility to move over to cover any additional staffing that you guys need. So you can use operating funds to cover that.
Okay, anyone else with a comment on this portion? Let's see, hold on. Share your screen, I can't see everybody. Okay, no, go ahead, Ron.
Great. I think the second resource allocation comes directly from the Commonwealth. So this happened really at the beginning of January with the state legislature put forward about 53 million in grant funds to all school districts. You can see under the mechanisms and rules of the road, the way they structured and organized the, the funding. $25 per student plus additional 75 per low-income student. They utilized that October 1 foundation enrollment at that point. These funds have a limited window to use, so you're looking to, for districts to have them used through till June 30th as the end of this fiscal year, FY21. And it's designed to be used really to help school districts navigate all things COVID-19. So everything from PVE to supplies, it can also be used for things like remote educators, the pool testing, couple of good examples of, of ways we can utilize this resource. It comes at a really opportune time where a lot of school districts like Carver are thinking about, you know, what testing, pool testing might look like and thinking about, you know, the kinds of staff that you may need to go through the rest of the school year. Both of the coronavirus prevention fund that we're looking at here and Easter two are one-time funds. So you really want to think about as we use them, we'll be using them for one-time costs versus typical operation costs year to year. Any questions on that one?
Hold on. Nope.
I promised I'd be brief.
You're doing it. So, but we're going on to the budget update?
Yes. So what you have in front of you is the FY22 balanced budget. This budget is predominantly a level services budget, so you don't see a lot of major changes from the presentations that Mr. Brothers has been giving you all along. Before I begin with the presentation, just want to take a moment to recognize, again, and thank Mr. Brothers for the incredible work as well as Superintendent Neef and all of the leadership team. I have the privilege to be able to sort of take the baton across the finish line on your FY22 budget. But they have really run the entire race in developing a strong budget to, to get Carver Public Schools ready for next school year. So you'll see me doing the presentation here, but Mr. Brothers will certainly jump in to give you further detail or maybe answer some questions where I just don't have the historical or background knowledge yet from, for Carver's perspective.
I'm not used to anybody calling Brad Mr. Brothers. Sorry, I had to be a wise guy there for a second.
You, you've seen the structure before in previous presentations, your budget is organized the way that DESI organizes its function codes. Each series, I'll go through the series and give you a brief update. So your thousand series is district-wide leadership and administration. It's all of your school committee expenses, central office expenses. You can see your FY21 budget, 673 and FY22, you know, 654, just a small downtick there in terms of your overall costs for your thousand series. That's predominantly a function of some reductions in your legal fees. Obviously in FY21, you've got your negotiations, so you have an uptick from 20 to 21 in your legal fees. And then from 21 to 22, even if those negotiations carry over, they'll be carrying over a reduced amount. Your 2000 series is really the meat of your budget. It includes obviously all of the instructional staff, all of those salaries, your professional development curriculum, tech, equipment licenses, et cetera. Again, your FY21 budget was, you know, 14.62, you're going up to 15.23. It's a small uptick of about 4%. Two highlights are important to keep in the back of your mind. The first is that this budget for FY22 is really built based upon the in-person return and the planning that Superintendent Neef outlined for you. It also reflects your current CVAs and your steps and lanes as well. As I said at the outset, this is predominantly a level services budget, so there's not a lot of major highlights for your instructional services. It's responding to bringing all the services online that you typically would have in a school year.
Might want to adjust that percent of change there. I don't think it went up 104%.
Yeah, anything, so just for percentage of change, if it's 100%, it's essentially flatlined. Anything above 100% is an additional increase, anything below 100% is a reduction. And I'll add two quick things on here. As Ron mentioned, the current teachers' contracts calls for a two and a half increase to all steps that's built into this operating budget. What's not is any additional increase above and beyond that that may be negotiated. You'll see when we come to the finish line here, it is a balanced budget with where the town's projections were, but any change on that, you guys may have to come back and make some changes on how you have shuffled some money around here. And then for Dwight Truitt, who was emailing earlier, paper needs are included in this piece right here.
We're waiting on David breath for the paper needs.
Well played.
Your 3000 series are all your other services, so transportation, nursing, athletics, and so on. Your 21 budget was, you know, just over $2 million. You remain right over $2 million in your FY22. Couple of highlights are important to keep in the back of your mind though. This is one of the places that is above level services. You brought on a nurse to respond to the pandemic. This FY22 budget includes that nurse as well and is offset by some of those Easter two funds. I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. Your 4000 series operations keeps the lights on, keeps the doors open in your schools. 1.64 in 21, 1.69 in 22. Again, you're looking at just shy of 3% increase there. Again, this is your other section where you're slightly above level services. You're brought on two custodians in response to the pandemic and your FY22 budget maintains the services of those two custodians offset again by that Easter two funds as well as some of the cares funds from the town. The other thing that's important to keep in the back of your mind for the two, the 4000s series is that you've got a slight increase to your elementary maintenance. The building now has a number of, of operational systems that occur by warranties and some of those warranties are coming offline. And so in order to maintain the, the building the way we want to, we had to make sure that we invest in supporting and maintaining those systems. Your 5000 series of fixed charges, the large majority of your 5000 series is really just your insurance. What I might do is, if you don't mind, Scott, I'm just going right to the next slide here, it'd be helpful. So this is a sort of drill down to your insurance breakdown for FY22. Couple of key things are important to keep in the back of your mind as you're looking at your 5000 series and your FY22 budget. The first and foremost is that this reflects a 0% increase for your insurance rates and that is not typical. You should expect going forward that you should see higher insurance rates, what that looked like, you know, still to be determined, obviously. But in the wake of COVID, insurance rates have either frozen or dropped in some places and so that currently provides the school district with a really substantial savings and expenses for insurance. And I'd expect that as the country and the world gets back to normal, that your insurance increases will get back to normal as well. So more to come, you know, in the coming months on this, but I wanted to make sure we call that out as a, a key component of your 5000 series in the FY22 budget.
And I'll just add quickly on two things on this. The only, there, there is a proposed increase in here and it's only to medics and medics is anyone who, who obviously is 65 or over who qualifies as a retiree. The difference in why we put an increase onto that is because our medics plans actually renew January 1st. They follow a calendar year, not a fiscal year. So generally that's usually around 8% increase. So that is built in. It's 8%, but technically it's only hit for half of the fiscal year. So that's why you see a 1.04 because you're only hit with that increase for only half of a, of a fiscal year. The other piece is Ron mentioned before is that realistically, this is going to be a big budget driver as you guys move forward into, into upcoming fiscal years. Don't forget, if our insurance, let's just say at average comes at $4 million, if we get hit with a 10% increase, that's $400,000 that we take out of our new money moving forward. Which in future years, depending on where the town finalizes revenues coming in, that could eat up your whole entire new revenue amount. So just remember that when you guys, as you move forward in future fiscal years, when elective surgeries happen again, this is going to be a big budget driver for you.
Yeah, and Brad, we floated between like six and nine the past couple of years prior.
Exactly, yep. Since I, I think there was a 12, maybe the year before I started. But since, since then, it's been five to eight, I think, every given year. So 0% really our saving grace of why we're able to bring forward and present to you guys a level budget, a level service budget, I have to put any, show any reductions.
29,000 series are your added district programs predominantly. Again, the lion's share of this budget that you see there is about 1.4 million added district costs, up just shy of four and a half, just a, over four and a half percent. So those are your costs in general, again, broken out by each of the, the budget series. I'll take just a moment to remind you of some of the revolving dollars that are tied to fees. I just spent a moment on it because it's not directly attached to sort of the operating funds that we want to spend a lot of time on. So that's just as a gentle reminder, athletics, murals, parking fees, where they go each year. The next slide though is the one that really outlines your revenue for FY22. Again, you can see where we were in FY21, about 24.23, FY22's proposal is 24.6. It's an increase of just shy of one and a half percent. I'll break that down in terms of some of the offsets for that revenue as well, some of the additional revenue that comes in. And really two buckets of offsets that I want to talk about. The first is your annual offset. So these are offsets that we expect to come in year after year. You've seen some of these before, your grants, IDA, Title I, Circuit Breaker, your pre-K fees, your school choice money, and then your Plymouth County reductions. All in, you're probably looking at about 1.74 million dollars in annual offsets that go to your operating budget. That's typical. The next slide is the one that I want to call your attention to especially. These are really more like one-time offsets. We're going to use some of these this year because of the pandemic to, to balance your budget, make sure that we're, we're fiscally conservative going into 22. But I just want to outline some of them for you for just a moment. To have your HRA reduction that Brad had talked to you about the past couple of presentations at about 82,000. It offsets your insurance costs, a low rollover from your FY21 grants to FY22 estimated about $25,000. I'll skip the Easter for just a second so I can get the other two that you've seen before. The cares reimbursement funds, it's about $50,000. That would go to some of those COVID positions and their benefits and then a prepaid to your collaboratives using some FY21 surplus at about 50,000. The last portion here, I talked about just a few moments ago when I gave you the update on the Easter two funds. Is that $106,000 coming in for Easter two that would ultimately be able to offset your COVID nurse and then your two COVID custodians as well. So you see the drill down here, your Easter two allocation, just over a half million dollars. We spend about $100,000 in FY22 that covers the services for those COVID positions. You're still remaining 436,000 to be used on whatever you might need to help guide the school district through reopening as we think about FY22 and in the fall.
And just the big piece to remember is, sorry, Andy, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Brad.
Just the biggest piece to remember on this about these available fund use is that we're building this budget, projecting a full in-person return. And if for some reason that does not happen to open up next school year and we do have to go to some type of a hybrid setting or some type of a remote setting, this is your pot of money that you have to utilize. So it's just important that you don't allocate all of this to be gone because this is the only piece of money you have to fall back on when you have to look at programs and anything that may have to do with any alternate education related to Carver Public Schools, because we have built this as projecting a full in-person return.
And going forward, after this, these funds, those positions we have in, we've added on, we have to pay for a lot of our general budget, you know.
If you maintain them, correct.
If we maintain most position.
If you maintain them, correct, yep. And can you go back up one slide? I don't know who's, Scott, are you driving this? Okay, so just to highlight two quick things on here for you guys is the HRA reduction, don't forget, that is based off the HRA agreement. The town came when we moved to GIC3 from GIC1. And there was mitigation money put aside. This is going to be through free cash that they're proposing this article. This helps both the school and town, the grand total allotment, I think they're requesting is $230,000. So while this is a one-time savings, this 82, 800 will come off your budget moving forward because it is built into your operating budget. It is essentially a one-time offset, but the town's proposing to do enough money to cover you for the next two fiscal years. And that's when that expense dropped off anyway. So that 1828 is a long-term savings that you guys will have every year moving forward as long as it passes town meeting in April. And the second piece was the rollover from grants. It's not typical that we have this much of enrollment, but the 25,000 is based on para savings we, we had for positions we didn't replace due to COVID that you're able to flex that money into year two and that's where 25,000 comes in.
That brings us to your FY22 bottom line. This just shows you the accounting of it all. To operate the school district is, as Brad had mentioned, with full reopening, you're looking at about 26.6 million. You less your annual offsets at 1.7 as well as those one-time at about 314. That brings your, your request for funding, your operating budget at 24, 604, 287. And the financial forecast of FY22's revenue from the town of Carver is that same number. And so it lands you at a fully balanced budget for FY22.
Right. And that 1.49%, that, that's the same percentage of the town, town's budget, the town government's municipal budget goes up as well, right? Is, we're both going up the same, same percentage wise.
That's great. Then your sentence so far.
So far, sorry. My apologies, I have a teacher right looking at me on the screen.
Just a few final takeaways as you think about the bottom line for FY22. As we showed you, you do have to lean on some one-time offsets here revolving accounts to make this balanced budget. Again, I just want to hearken back to what I said at the beginning. I think the town of, of Carver, this community and the school district is fortunate for the financial leadership you've had from the school committee, Superintendent Neef, Mr. Brothers, Brad. And the fact that Carver isn't the place that you're in, you're able to have a balanced budget here in February is a testament to just strong financial management. Certainly worldwide pandemic a compelling reason to lean on one-time money. And I would just sort of caution broadly that that leaning on that one-time money is not something we want to do annually. We want to get back to utilizing all of our annual recurring revenue streams.
Thank you, Ron. Ron, I have a question for you.
Sure.
What we do, we've done for at least the last five years is that when Brad has done these budget transfers and updates for us, we do all these transfers in open meeting and we vote on all of them. Do, in your experience, is that something that's typically done in other towns or is it something that's not typically done?
I would say, I would say it's done in towns that have good financial management.
All right, I wasn't sure if it was a.
It's not, it was not typical for everybody and I, I appreciate the transparency and the frequency that Carver uses here because these are taxpayer dollars. Ultimately, everybody in the town has contributed to the operation of your schools and you should see where the money is at and hopefully see, you know, the ways in which it's being used to help kids every day.
Exactly. James, you.
I just, you're going to tell him about the moose hat he has to wear when he presents the budget, the budget that, you know, the one we.
That's, was that the next meeting, isn't it?
Let me stay in for a month before you put out the moose hat, I got it. Let me stay in for a month before you put up the moose hat, I got it.
So we're not necessarily looking for any action on the budget this evening, so at our next meeting on March eighth, we would do. The public hearing of the budget and look for the school committee to vote on the budget presented that evening, but we don't see a lot of change in terms of the bottom line between now and March eighth.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Ron, thank you, Brad, thank you, Mr. Brothers.
You're welcome.
Brad's gonna join us back on March eighth as well as we go to the, now probably his final school committee meeting. Consideration on March eighth. Well, as far as meeting in Carver.
Right, all right, well, thank you very much, we'll move on to upcoming events. Scott, you have something for?
Yeah, I do want to pull this up just to highlight a couple of pieces. And really, I know we just tabled a few items for March eighth, and I have some other items I want, we want to do on March eighth. The thing I wanted to highlight here. Is that at the middle high school, we're getting into the course selection process. And. Really, that course selection process is really becomes about the pathways. I'm promoting the pathways with the community, promoting pathways with the students. So, you know, today was actually the tenth grade course selection for cohort A. I went to part of that presentation, Mr. Schultz did a nice job talking about pathways with the students and, and some of the opportunities they're gonna have. Over the next couple of years, and we are gonna also have a parent presentation. I'm looking for it on the dates here, I think it's actually next week. So March second at six thirty, it's what I want to highlight, we are gonna do a program of studies parent presentation. That Mr. Schultz is gonna lead for students entering grades nine through twelve next year, for this year's eighth through eleventh graders. Where we're gonna make a public presentation on pathways and the opportunities that'll be available to students at the middle high school. So we'd encourage people to attend that, March second, six thirty, I'll be the Zoom webinar, hopefully Mr. Schultz will get it off the ground a little better than I did this evening. And we really would encourage people to attend that presentation. And at our school committee meeting on the eighth, we're gonna give it a pathways update. Talk about some of the advertising we're doing and promotions we're doing for the pathways program. So that was the thing I wanted to highlight here, and obviously we talked about the middle school job production, being a middle schooler in twenty twenty, virtually coming up this weekend.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we move on to. Recommendations from the superintendent, subcommittee reorganization.
So. I, James has made a decision since that, since he is, his term is coming to an end in April, I think, James, you're kind of publicly announcing that you're not seeking a new term. At the end of April, you did that, I think you did that earlier in the meeting a little bit, maybe you didn't say it that directly. But, so as we're looking at our subcommittees as we go into negotiations, James thought it would make sense to. James, I should add on to this, to step down from the negotiating committees that he's on, specifically the, for the ESPs. Because most likely he would not carry that process through. So with James stepping down, we would need to appoint someone, so we need a motion to appoint someone to the ESP negotiations subcommittee.
Okay. Do we have any nominations to take that position from James? Let's see.
Move Jen Pratt takes that position.
Oh. All right, Jen.
Motion for Jen to take that position.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we will motion in a second. Jen, what other, what other negotiation teams are you on?
I am on custodians and bus drivers, so I believe.
Be too much for you?
Well, what I thought we had talked about.
Yeah, I could swap one with you.
Yeah, that you were gonna take bus drivers.
Yeah, because all I have is the teachers, so I could, I could do the bus drivers.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to appoint Jen Pratt to the ESP negotiations and Andy Carterelli to replace Jen Pratt. In the, in the bus driver negotiations.
Okay, we revised motion and we now have a second. Okay. Any discussion on those nominations? Seeing none, okay, it's a roll call vote, Stephanie Clarity?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Well, wait, before we, I'm sorry, I want to suspend this for a second. Should Jen and I vote on this?
It's fine.
We voted on the original one.
That's true, we did, okay. I wasn't sure it was being candidates, we should, okay, Stephanie Clarity?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Okay, Jen Pratt?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Jason Greenwood?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien?
James O'Brien, aye.
Andy Carterelli, aye, okay, so we made that correction, or not correction, adjustment. All right, now we move to reports from the school committee. Does anybody have anything else to say? Jason Greenwood, is his hand up?
I have one thing, I'd like to recognize Kate Moore at the elementary school, she's putting together the community reader day. Something that we missed out on last year, and the unique way that she went about to do it this year is really good. So I know it hasn't happened yet, but I know the planning and everything that's kind of gone on. To that end, so I just wanted to give her a quick shout out.
Very nice, we appreciate that, which does great work. Anybody else? Before we adjourn? Okay, seeing no one, I think I have nothing else to say myself, I, I think I've already said it. Stephanie, do you have something?
No, I was just gonna make a motion to go to executive session, to end the executive session.
All right.
Not to return, go to session.
Right, and James, seconds?
Second.
We all.
We all did, okay, roll call, vote, Jason Greenwood?
Jason Greenwood, aye.
James O'Brien?
Brian, aye.
Stephanie Clarity?
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Jennifer Brett?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Andy Carterelli, aye. Before we leave, I just like to thank everyone for attending tonight, thank Area Fifty Eight for getting our, our meeting here on the air eventually, thank. If someone, if Catherine's here from the Carver reporter, thank you for reporting on this meeting for us, and thank everybody that attended tonight. And we will see you at our next meeting.